It is Tuesday, April 4th, 2023, and I call to order this regular session of the City of Bloomington Common Council. Deputy Clerk Stoll, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Here.
Rosenberger?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Pete Mount Smith?
Here.
Skimmeluri?
Here.
Rollo? Sims?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Volan?
Here.
Thank you. We'll then we'll begin with our land and labor acknowledgement for the City of Bloomington. We recognize that the City of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people, and we acknowledge that they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana, and specifically Bloomington, resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many indigenous and other people of color, and commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity. Moving into agenda summation, we'll begin tonight with the approval of three sets of minutes from June 2nd, 2021, and from April 6th and April 20th of 2022. We'll then move into reports, first from council members, then we will have reports from the mayor and city offices, including a 2023 comprehensive plan tracking report. We'll hear any reports from council committees, and then we'll come to our first of two periods of public comment. We'll then take up appointments to boards and commissions, and then move into legislation for second readings and resolutions. Included there are appropriation ordinance 23-01 to specially appropriate the current balance of the opioid settlement fund to help address the impacts of the opioid crisis on city and county residents. Also there is appropriation ordinance 23-02 to specially appropriate funds from the general fund for construction of the Trades District Tech Center and associated construction management services. We have no legislation for first readings this evening, so we will then move to our second of two periods of public comment. We'll then take up matters of council schedule, and then finally we'll adjourn. So with that, we move to approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the minutes of June 2nd, 2021, as amended, of April 6th, 2022, and April 20th, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That passes. Those minutes are approved. Let's come to council member reports. I'm going to start on my far left. Councilmember Volan?
No report.
Councilmember Smith?
I have no report tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Sims?
No report. Thank you.
Councilmember Pete Mount Smith?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to, first of all, invite the public to my monthly constituent meeting, which will be this Saturday at, April 8th, at 11:00 a.m., and you can find the Zoom link on the City Council website, bloomington.in.gov/council. I will also have an in-person part of the meeting. It'll be hybrid, so you can also join me in the McCloskey Room of City Hall, room 135. And in honor of National Poetry Month, I would like to read a poem by Warsan Shire, a Somali-British poet, born 1988. And this poem is called "Backwards." The poem can start with him walking backwards into a room. He takes off his jacket and sits down for the rest of his life. That's how we bring Dad back. I can make the blood run back up my nose, ants rushing into a hole. We grow into smaller bodies, my breasts disappear. Your cheeks soften, teeth sink back into gums. I can make us loved, just say the word. Give them stumps for hands if even once they touched us without consent. I can write the poem and make it disappear. Stepdad spits liquor back into glass. Mum's body rolls back up the stairs, the bone pops back into place. Maybe she keeps the baby. Maybe we're okay, kid. I'll rewrite this whole life, and this time, there'll be so much love, you won't be able to see beyond it. You won't be able to see beyond it. I'll rewrite this whole life, and this time, there'll be so much love. Maybe we're okay, kid. Maybe she keeps the baby. Mum's body rolls back up the stairs, the bone pops back into place. Stepdad spits liquor back into glass. I can write the poem and make it disappear. Give them stumps for hands if even once they touched us without consent. I can make us loved, just say the word. Your cheeks soften, teeth sink back into gums. We grow into smaller bodies, my breasts disappear. I can make the blood run back up my nose, ants rushing into a hole. That's how we bring Dad back. He takes off his jacket and sits down for the rest of his life. The poem can start with him walking backwards into a room. Poetry by Warsan Shire in honor of National Poetry Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg?
No report.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenberger?
Thank you. I just wanted to invite everyone to my constituent meeting. It is next Tuesday, April 11th, at 5:30, and that is on Zoom. You can find the link on the council website.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
No report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have no report this evening. So that'll take us to reports from the mayor and city offices, including a 2023 comprehensive plan tracking report. I believe we have Mr. Oh, there you are. I believe we have Mr. Robling with us tonight. Always moments of suspense with technology.
Sorry. All right. Thank you for having me. I am doing the 2023 comprehensive plan tracking update. This is the third one we've done now. The previous one was in 2021. We skipped a year in 2022.
And if you could confirm your name?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Ryan Robling, Planning and Transportation, Planning Services Manager.
Thank you.
So the comprehensive plan is the City of Bloomington's long-range plan for all aspects of land use planning, including development and transportation. It describes the community's vision for the future. Additionally, it, the comprehensive plan establishes goals for which the city seeks to achieve over the lifecycle of the plan. This current plan, adopted in 2018, is expected to live on in some fashion until 2040. So with the goals identified in the plan come policies and outcomes which are identified, incremental steps along the path to achieving those goals. Each outcome identified in the plan has indicators that act as a progress report to help determine if the city is on track. The provided report acts as a checkpoint review for 25 of those indicators. I'll individually be covering 13 tonight, and I'll note that not every indicator is written in a way that is easily presentable, or data could be found. So some of them are the best approximation of that data. Oh, you don't have my new one. Shoot. Hang on. No, it's not your fault, my fault. Let's see, hold on. All right, can I override? See if it works this time.
Apologies for the technical difficulties. One moment.
Sorry about that. I think it's working now. So it's broken up into, the comprehensive plan's broken up into six chapters, two sections. The first is the part I'll cover. The second part is the land use map, and it won't be covered tonight. Chapter one, we identified seven item indicators that we'll cover, only a handful tonight. The first is real, real per capita personal income. As you can see, there was a 12% uptick in Bloomington's real per capita personal income after the first full year of adoption, so that would be 2019. And we used a comparison city of Lafayette, West Lafayette, as they are within the same state and have a similar population. Previously reported was Ann Arbor and Madison, Wisconsin, but in the updated version, we only chose to do West Lafayette. Per capita GDP, again, we used West Lafayette here. This was, this is for every dollar spent in the city on goods and services. Also identified are private industry gross domestic product and government gross domestic product, so that would be spending based on those two organizations. Trans and sector employment, we took the 2019 data and the 2021 data and compared to see what sectors had a change in number of employees. So you, in the darker colors, you can see a larger percentage lost or gained. You can see that, for example, there was a large gain in transportation warehousing, but a significant loss in information and management of companies and enterprises. There's a total of 180 positions lost over that course of two years. So one of the indicators is the number of demolition requests. That is identified through certificates of zoning compliance. A building department, building permit, demolition permit, excuse me, is requested, and then that is reviewed by the city. Projects that meet the terms of Title 20, the UDO, are issued a certificate of zoning compliance. Those have been identified here. Total request separated. I can't guarantee that all of these buildings have actually been demolished. I can only guarantee that some have been, that the numbers here are issued. I've also identified number of historic properties. As you can see, there's a large uptick in 2021 that matches the total building permit uptick that we saw during the mid-pandemic period. All right, so a number of cultural and arts and entertainment institutions. There's a pretty cool chart here. There's an interactive version, if you follow the link at the beginning of the presentation in your packet, where you can see what each indicator is, or, excuse me, each institution is identified by name and location. Okay, so one of the indicators is the increase in square footage of green roofs. Since 2019, or, excuse me, since 2018, there have been 3,000 total square feet of green roofs added. There's an additional 3,000, 3,670 coming on Third and Grant, if you're familiar with that. And then the North Pete Ellis Drive has a pending total because it is variable based on solar and, I believe, white roof numbers. So that final number will be, once they start getting a final plan review, we'll know a final total there. All right. In the assessed value for downtown, you can see that it's increased 22.7% over the December 2018 assessed value and the December 2022 assessed value, and the total percentage change in the entire city was 35%. The occupancy rate for downtown commercial spaces, I'll make note that I accidentally wrote the vacancy rate in the presentation provided in the packet, is 94.6%. So there's 115 blocks identified in the UDO, the Title 20, that have a requirement for 50% non-residential ground floor. Of that 115 blocks, there is an occupancy rate of 94.6%. Total non-residential spaces, 278, and total vacant spaces identified on March 21st were 15. So there's a call for a mapping of abandoned properties and shovel-ready sites. As someone who does development review, or previously did development review, there's no such thing as a shovel-ready site, but there are sites that are vacant. So we've identified the vacant sites from the December 2018 assessor data. You can see those here. There's been a map included, an interactive version of this map is included in that online version as well. You can see that over the course of those four years, we've saw a roughly half of the potentially shovel-ready sites were developed, and the number of parking lots or structures was, stayed about the same as 41 and 47, I believe. Okay, so there's a democratic, excuse me, demographic profile of residential units in the downtown overlay district. You can see that the people who live in downtown are relatively young, relatively diverse, have a median household income of roughly $14,000, and they live in homes that are roughly $330,000. You can see an average commute time matches roughly what's projected for the entire city. And, yeah. Oh, sorry. And they're equally male and female identifying. All right, this one is the percentage of dwelling units occupied. This was previously reported. As you know, dicennial censuses have updated census blocks, so it's not the exact same map as previously provided, but you can see that it's roughly the same. Most census blocks have an 85% or higher occupancy rate. However, you can see the effects of the pandemic on a couple of areas where student-occupied housing is identified. Again, this map has an interactive version. You can get in closer and see what areas have been affected more. All right. And then we estimated the total hours of average commute spent in traffic. So the average, sorry. So per year, the average Bloomitonian spends 144 hours in traffic commuting. That's 16.7 minutes each way from home to work and, or from home to work and work to home, and 260 days of work. All right, so the number of fatalities and incapacitating injuries, I'll note that this, there's a copy and paste error in your packet. This is the adjusted numbers. Those have been included online. You can see that there is a steady decrease in the last three years. I believe 2019 was the last reported year previously, and so this extends that. You can see that there is an increase in fatalities in, this is for Monroe County, not just Bloomington, but there's been a number of, an increase in the number of fatalities. Crash rates for people walking and bicycling, you can see that it's roughly staying steady. It did drop 2019 and 2020 and saw a rise again. And then number of crash rates with fatalities for bicycles and pedestrians is staying within the two to three range. And then finally, the motor vehicle collision for Monroe County is, again, was previously reported, 2018, 2019. Those numbers have changed slightly in that we adjusted how we were reviewing some, some previous collisions were misreported multiple times, so we've adjusted for that. So you'll, if you go back and look, you'll see that they're one or two off, but the rest of the numbers are correct. So you can see that the pandemic brought the number down a little bit, and then it's on a steady rise since then. Here are the sources, the full 25 list, and I'm happy to go over any of those if you have any questions. And then if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Robling. Let's come to council for questions. Councilmember Volan?
First, I wanted to at least note the passing of those people who were killed in accidents that are noted here, and I wish we didn't have to refer to them as statistic tonight, but I just wanted to call attention to it. Can you go back to the slide that involves downtown residential parking? Because I'm not sure I quite understood the import of that slide. You're talking about off-street parking, I take it, that was included with the development project?
The parking lots and structures are, is this the right slide?
No, no, the, this is abandoned properties. I'm talking about parking. Yeah, is this the one? Right. So help us understand this. When you say vacant, these, that first column, total number of non-residential spaces within the blocks, does that mean lots in the building or parking garages?
Correct. Sorry. There's, this is not parking. This is occupancy rate of the actual non-residential spaces within buildings. So this is total number of residential, non-residential spaces identified. The UDO calls for 50% non-residential ground floor. It would be difficult to...
Okay, so these are non-residential ground floor spaces that for, okay?
Yes, not, not parking related necessarily.
And you're saying that 95% of these spaces are in fact occupied?
Correct.
So was there any prior statistic, any prior statistic to this?
No, unfortunately, this takes actually walking the 115 blocks to determine. So this is a baseline statistic. It'll carry forward for the next report.
I guess as a planner, I would ask, does this statistic surprise you? Did you expect this figure?
Yes. The, as a planner in this city, I expected this number for this area. I was not surprised. It matches what you see in similar commercial downtowns.
So there has been, one more follow-up, if you don't mind. There, there has been talk about converting unused commercial space to residential, especially post-pandemic. Do you see, I'm not sure where this, yeah, this is, we have different definitions of downtown in some of these slides, but do you see any demand for conversions of commercial space to residential space in this area?
So there's been requests for changes. I don't know that the demand is necessarily an issue. Individual property owners, that is up to them whether or not...
Well, I mean, I, that's, I think we're using the same idea. In other words, are property owners requesting conversions to residential space on ground floor?
Yes, there have been one or two requests in this particular 115 blocks. In the greater downtown, which does not have that 50% ground floor requirement, there have been previously, but we've retracted that area. It used to be a much higher percentage of the downtown. In fact, it was the entire downtown that had a non-residential ground floor requirement. That is gone in large percentages of the downtown.
So the requirement is gone, but it's clear that there's still a very healthy commercial market for first floor?
I would say so, yes.
Very good. Thank you so much for the extended remark, questions?
Councilmember Sims?
Thank you, Mr. Robling, for the report. A quick comment, if I may. I noticed that Indianapolis, this don't have anything to do with you really at this point, but Indianapolis is passing legislation about no turn on red, and I just was taken aback at how far ahead we were of the curve. So shout out to my colleagues down here, Rosenberger, and those that supported that. Okay, back to business. You were talking about green roofing, and we've got 3,000 square feet completed and another 3,700 in the pipeline. Is that, now, my direct question was that, does that directly relate to concessions for affordable housing?
No, I would say that these numbers do not. Most of the numbers provided here were prior to the adoption of the UDO as it stands now, which has that affordable housing rules.
Pending?
Pending, no. The Third and Grant one is fully after the adoption of the UDO, the new UDO, and utilized both. They wanted the full extension of the benefits of those.
Okay, thank you. Next question. The topic of demographic profile residential units in the downtown overlay. In the comment that I heard, and I'd like for you to explain a little bit, you said it was relatively diverse. What does that mean, and does that include racial and cultural diversity?
Sure. So there's a diversity index that the census puts out, every census, and it is, the percentage here in the downtown for the 4,400 residents is 48.3%, which, if it were a state, would put it at 22nd, if that helps you give, get an idea. It is more diverse than Bloomington as a whole, downtown is. I don't have the exact number, but I can provide that for you.
Yeah, please do.
But I will, absolutely.
More diverse than Bloomington as a whole? I'm still not sure, I understand what you mean by that.
Sure. So yes, a lot of things go, sorry, I should have gone into, the diversity index by the census has a lot of indicators, so race, gender, things like that are all identified. Ethnicity, I can't remember all of them off the top of my head, but yes, they are all identified, and they all add to the index total. So the higher the number, the more diverse an area is.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to see that, if you can. Thank you.
Councilmember Pete Mount Smith?
Yes, thank you so much for this very comprehensive report. I will be digging into it in the coming days. I had two things that stood out for me this evening. One of them was, well, it's page 80 of our packet, so I'm not sure what page that is for, for you, Mr. Robling, but it's the motor vehicle collisions. I am not sure how to read this chart. I don't know what the numbers on the y-axis are, 3,500, 3,000, 2,500. Could you explain what that indicates?
Was this the chart? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. So the, I, this is, all collisions are tallied here, and then I broke them out. The way that the MPO defines collisions includes resulting in injuries, resulting in incapacitating injuries, resulting in possible injuries, and then resulting in fatalities. Those are all separate collisions. So the collision total means it's just a collision, did not have an injury or fatality or potential injury or fatality related.
Okay, so the total number, like in the 2018, was a little over 3,500. What does the number seven at the top of that column mean?
Yes, so the number's so large that you can't actually see it. I'm sorry, I tried to figure out a better way to do it, and I didn't. Collision resulting in fatalities is the number at the top. It's just so narrow compared to the rest of collisions that you can't see it.
Oh, okay. All right, so that would be a thin black line that represents those seven?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, we need to do better, for sure. The other, and I don't know if it was actually part of your presentation, but it is in our, what we received in our packet, and that is on page 61. It's 3.4.1, amount of waste diverted from landfill as a percent of all waste. So what I'm seeing here is that, whereas in 2018, 39% of the waste was diverted from the landfill, whereas in 2022, only 30% was. So that is a negative trend, and I would like to know more about, is this just what the city picks up as far as the city services for residential units with four or fewer units? Residential buildings with few, four or fewer units? with few, four or fewer units? Or what does that reflect?
Uh, so yes, this reflects all waste that headed towards the landfill during those years. The number is actually misleading. I probably should have just presented on this, but it's, it's not from planning, so I didn't, I don't propose to be an expert. But the, I have a quick thing from them. It says, since the 2018 amount of both solid waste and recycling have increased approximately 15% annually. This is due to the addition of areas within the city that have collected in addition to continued education and encouragement of recycling. Since 2020 and the onset of COVID, more people have been working and eating at home and resulting in a much higher collection of both solid and waste recycling. In addition, the city's transition to mulching in place and the discontinuation of curbside leaf program have been resulted in less yard waste. All, and all the changes are proportional to the amount of material being collected. That's from D B W staff themselves. I'm sorry. I can forward that on to you.
Well, what you just said sounds like the percentage of waste diverted would increase, but what we see here in the chart is that it actually decreased. So I'm a little confused.
Uh, so no, the, sorry, the number is increasing roughly 15% annually regardless of the decreases. And then the amount that is being, formerly would have been diverted away from the landfill, yard waste, et cetera, is now being used on site. So that's lowering that number even more. Sorry.
Okay. So the data is collected by the Department of Public Works. So is my assumption correct that this is only the waste that is picked up by sanitation?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Yeah, if, if you could send me the, the additional information, that would be very helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Member Flaherty?
Thank you. First of all, I should just make a motion to extend time for this section of the agenda until 7:15 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, hit by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. That passes. Please go ahead.
Thanks. I just think we are past our 20-minute limit and trying to be better about keeping an eye on those things. Thank you, Mr. Robling, for the presentation. Does the planning department track every indicator from the comprehensive plan on an annual basis or only some?
Uh, we do not track every indicator. We pick 25 yearly to track those.
Got it. Is it the same 25 or that changes over time?
It is not the same 25. It changes. We do try to go back to numbers that have created a baseline in the past.
Mm-hmm. I'm curious. So the comprehensive plan frames outcomes and indicators. And I don't think, it's possible outcomes were sort of included in some of your presentation. But typically you'll have an outcome, like here's one, for example, increase the range of affordable housing options that are universally designed and environmentally sustainable. And then it has a number of indicators. And I think you reported on some of those indicators. I guess what I'm getting at though, and I'm curious about is like interpretation of the results to inform policymaking. So thinking not just, here's what's happening with the numbers, here's where income is in the city, here's the number of, you know, but trying to help, help us understand, better understand and possibly come with recommendations about what the data are telling us and, and what we could do about it. I think maybe not all the indicators are best suited to lead us in that direction. It's not always apparent that the cause necessarily from the indicators. But what are, what are your thoughts or your department's thoughts overall on, on that type of question about how to use this data for improving policy?
Yeah, that's a great question. So this, this presentation matched previous presentations. I didn't want to veer too far off of what was familiar. I will say that the future updates, we tend to look at goals and objectives rather than just indicators alone. Will preferably select one of the chapters and do a deeper dive. That would be the preference in the future. I think this was, especially after a five-year period, now it's 2023, adopted in 2018, that would be an expected result is to, to actually look at goals and objectives in a deeper manner. So I suspect that is what we'll do in the future.
Thank you. A brief follow-up if that's okay. And is it fair to surmise that tracking every indicator on an annual basis is too much of a burden for the department? Like it's not really possible?
Yes, absolutely. You know, with a staff of 13, you would need a census staff department to, to go out and tally every number.
Sure. And what are your thoughts about how, how well equity is integrated into our indicators, looking back at it, like in terms of thinking about improving equity outcomes?
That's a great question. I would say that some of the indicators, many of the indicators are just facts as presented, which do not take into account equity. And we could certainly be better across the board at doing that, especially in the comprehensive plan.
Okay, final question, which is, based on all that, would you all be open to updating and refining our process for reporting on indicators and outcomes in A, a way that's comprehensively manageable for you all in terms of workload, and B, might help drive equitable policy outcomes in a, in a more intentional way maybe than we have right now?
We would absolutely be supportive, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Seeing none, I'll take, oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you very much. Mr. Robling, I just was going to ask if you'll comment on the slide 4.5.1, the demographic profile again. Just so I am understanding it, if we see the median, median household income of 14,000 and change and home value of 330,000, what would you conclude from, from that data right there?
Uh, yeah, I would conclude that 92%, 93% of them are renters, which was another indicator included. But yeah, they do not own their homes and therefore they don't have that as a total value in their bank account.
Yeah. And do we also conclude, and I'm not trying to lead the witness, but that those 93% are just, they're students, right?
Largely, yeah.
At least that's our, that would, might be a good conclusion.
I would say so. They're student age at least.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was looking at that okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Let me take a round one. Okay. If you would go to trends in sector employment, 1.10.5. And in particular, I'm interested in the areas that showed a lot, a really dramatic change in information and management of companies and enterprises. I'm wondering if we are counting differently or recategorizing some kinds of employment? Can you comment on that? Because those seem like pretty dramatic changes to me.
Uh, no, I cannot.
And I realize that Bloomington is not the source of that data.
Yes. I didn't tally these. The census did. So I, I'm not sure what the change is, to be honest. I did not have enough time to analyze. I suspect for the management of companies and enterprises, one company closed because it's 13 jobs, whereas information, I, I'm not certain. Potentially COVID affected those numbers as digital nomads moved around the country. That probably doesn't account for 328, but I'm not sure, certain.
To the extent you can find additional information on that, could you share it?
Of course.
Thank you. Round two questions. Councilmember Volan.
So the question that Councilmember Smith asked about demographics downtown dovetails with 423 employment levels and salary and wage levels. Do you have a way, I mean, I know that census data is pretty comprehensive, but it's also pretty obtuse and hard to get to find. But is there a way that you can separate the below the 18 to 24 group when you compile this data so that we can compare the, effectively the student and the non-student economies? Because one of the most common things that happens to a city like ours is that, for example, we're reporting an income of $14.5,000 a year, which only makes sense when you factor in that students basically don't report income. But that doesn't mean that the, the city is in poverty, or at least it's, it causes us to focus on poverty in the wrong way. So is there a way that you can hold like that demographic group out when compiling this data?
My gut instinct is no, but I'm, we may be able to parse it slightly to get a result to what you're looking for. But yeah, like, like you said, census data just comes as a number. It's kind of hard to, to dive into it deeper than that, but it's not completely impossible. So I will definitely look into that.
Okay. I wonder if the, all the questions we're asking, especially Councilmember Flaherty's questions, don't really call for this to be a consideration of the committee on processes because this is certainly a process that we're all concerned about. And I wonder if that committee wouldn't be of, of service to you in thinking about how to optimize the task that's ahead of you. So just, that's a comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, there was a slide on occupancy rate of residential housing in downtown. I don't remember which one it is, but I went to the ARC GIS extra information link that was provided. And, you know, mostly it's, it's very red, indicating that there's a very high occupancy rate. But there is one census tract where there's an only, only a 31% occupancy rate. And it seems to be between Third Street and Seventh Street and between Walnut and Indiana Avenue. And I'm very surprised at that. Is this something, do you have any more information on this? Or could it possibly be, yeah, it's that yellow one there. Could it possibly be that units that were not ready for occupancy were counted? Do you, do you have any further info?
Uh, I have a guess. And you've hinted at it, two parts. One, the pandemic saw a lot of students leave. There's an area to the north here that has an occupancy rate of zero. It's home to a number of dorms and student housing. So zero seems unlikely. But during the pandemic, students went home. So I believe that has a large effect on that, this area downtown. I also, there were a number of demolitions at the time of the census. So Third and Grant, which was reviewed under the green roof, we mentioned under the green roof, there was, I can't remember the exact number, but there were housing units that were there. So the census just sends a mailer. If they don't get a response, they count that as unoccupied. So if you send a mailer to a building that doesn't exist, it's just going to come back. And so they'll still count the number of occupant, or dwelling units, but they won't get an occupancy rate. That number, I suspect, will spike in the next census in 2030.
Okay, I see. Thank you.
Additional questions? Okay. And we are just about at 7:15. So, Mr. Robling, thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you.
That'll take us to our next item, which is reports from council committees. I'm not aware of any, but if there are any. Nope, seeing none. Okay, that takes us to our first period, first of two periods of public comment for items not on the legislative agenda this evening. Are there, just a quick show of hands in chambers, folks who would like to offer public comment this evening for items not on the agenda? One, two. And Mr. Lucas, could you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes. If there are members of the public joining us via Zoom that would like to speak, please let us know now by using the raise hand feature. You can find that in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab. And if you can't locate that raise hand button, please send a chat to the meeting host and we will recognize you that way.
Okay. And for those in chambers, go ahead and approach the podium and please sign in if you would. And Mr. Lucas, are you seeing hands on?
I see no hands raised at the moment.
Okay. Then let's go ahead and start here in chambers. If you would, please do sign in. There should be a sign-in sheet there. And then-
Let me ask why I do that. This may relate to the, one of the agenda items. The, my comment might relate to the agenda of the comprehensive plan, but not to the item that was being presented. Do I fit here or later? Or where?
I think here would, would be acceptable.
Now? Okay.
If I understood you correctly. But if you would, please state your name for the record and then you'll have five minutes.
Terry Amslur. My wife and I live on East Wimbledon Lane in Bloomington. Very briefly, good evening, councilmembers. I really wasn't, didn't come here prepared to speak, but I didn't, I didn't really know what was on the agenda. But since the comprehensive plan was on the agenda, I will say briefly that I happened to pull together a couple of years ago, all the public engagement excerpts of goals, policies, outcomes relating to public engagement for teaching that I was doing. And I don't carry them around, but I happen to have a couple of them in the back of my appointment book that I am carrying around. And so in this, it made me think. So here's what I think. You know, there, it's, I don't know if anyone's compiled this. I'll leave two to clerk there in case anyone would find it useful. It may, it ties into some of what's being suggested maybe. And there's interesting language in here, as you know, about public engagement, such as, and I'm not going to read them all briefly, because I have a point to make and I'll be done. Goal 1.6 is commit to, plan for transparency, open government, and effective assessment inclusive public engagement, so that exemplary services are provided to our residents, businesses, nonprofit organizations, and visitors while promoting more participatory citizenship. There's one on promote staff, public engagement, knowledge, and competencies, and support city departments to assess and document their public engagement experiences and share their learning across departments. These are from the present comprehensive plan 2018. One other, perhaps, noted on this copy. Create opportunities for additional public access, such as online document search, permit applications, et cetera. Involve housing and neighborhood development, council of neighborhood associations, determining how the city can be more responsive to neighborhood participation. And lastly, I'll just say about an outcome, engagement processes are inclusive and representative, and they're looking at demographic makeup of engagement participation. So I'm just saying, thinking about outcomes, you have material here. I don't know how much anyone's looking at it, however. I don't know that, though. I'm not as close to this as almost anybody else in Bloomington, really. But I, you do have a public engagement director, I believe, in the city. Be interesting, maybe, this is a two-cent idea off the top of my head, to have that person come and say, how we doing with public engagement? And run through this maybe. Because I think there's good information here. I mean, there's, there's good language here. So how we doing? Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lucas, did we, have we had any hands on Zoom?
Not that I see, no.
Thank you. Then let's come here in chambers. If you would, please sign in and state your name for the record and then you'll have five minutes.
Hello, my name's Chase Tekington. Thank you for your attention tonight. I've lived here in Bloomington for many years. I've had a number of direct service roles and administrative roles in agencies that serve people experiencing homelessness. And I have some comments for you, some public engagement for you about, about that topic. For many years in those roles, I was very bewildered and discouraged about what is a very difficult and complicated problem. But after I heard a lecture from a Vanderbilt researcher named Marion Beth Shin at the O'Neill School, picked up her book and she had some very, a couple of interesting things. She said, when she opens her classes, she asks her students two questions. She hands half of them out, question one, half of them, question two. Question one is, why do you think one person might be homeless? And the answers that she gets back are that chaotic milieu, all of the difficult problems, fleeing domestic violence, lifetime of poverty, the birth of a baby but unable to afford childcare, the loss of a job, permanent disability, those kinds of things that we link to homelessness as these really difficult issues, poor mental health, addiction. And then the other question and its answer were very freeing to me and helped give me some motivation and clarity to continue in a lot of my roles. And that question was, why are so many people homeless? Slightly different question. What's the rate of homelessness? And her answer from her research was simple. And that is, the rate of homelessness in a given community is directly related to the rate of affordability in that community. So simple economics tells us supply and demand, control prices. Here we have a community where our supply of housing is low, and according to her research, that is driving up the prices of homes. And that is driving the rate of homelessness in our community compared to other similarly situated communities or other communities in America. So as for supply, our, the construction of homes, generally, we have a lot of ideas that I, I'm really grateful to live in a city where we have subsidies, where we have supports for people who are going through all those intractable issues, all those very difficult issues that affect one person at a time. But we also have some opportunities in this community- But we also have some opportunities in this community to address that core issue, that big driver that makes our rate of homelessness a little bit different. Some say it's rates of poverty. Mississippi is the most, is the poorest state in the Union, has the lowest housing homelessness rate, because housing is affordable there. Meanwhile, California, which if it were a state, would be the Earth's fifth largest economy, has the highest rate of homelessness. Hundred thousand people sleep outside or in shelter in California on a given night. The Bay Area alone, 30,000 people, they can only shelter 30% of them. Those are communities where their local governments made zoning and plan laws that did not allow their markets to create enough housing to supply all the demand that was there. Indeed, we saw tonight that red map of, of housing use, where we're leasing at 95%. You can't turn tables that fast. You go into Red Robin, and they tell you that that's their table turn rate. You would not wait, right? And we saw first floor retail also constrained. And surely we have more concern for homeless people than for a homeless business. So I would like to ask that this council consider some of the plans in the UDO and some of the pieces of our regulatory environment that constrain the construction of new homes. I want to thank you guys for paying attention to our health and safety, especially long-term, our environmental health and safety. By tying in those regulations, that regu, that development is not rampant. But I ask that you consider some of the aesthetic restrictions, like height, density, location, and design that have been held up to me as preserving the character and charm of our community. But I do not find homelessness quaint or charming, and I don't think the people who experience it do either. So I ask that you guys consider how to preside over a regulatory environment that permits our market to create enough housing to meet what is, according to our maps that we saw tonight, some skyrocketing demand. And last of all, I would just like to plug our downtown outreach programs. There is no better and more effective use to, in the meantime, address homelessness through the activities that those programs fund. Motels for children who are experiencing homelessness in an emergency, tickets home for people who are stranded here that don't need to be in our shelters, street outreach, partnerships with local law enforcement, mental health service providers. The downtown outreach grant is an amazing way to address homelessness in the meantime until we can address our housing problems. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Tekington. Are there additional comments here in chambers? And Mr. Lucas, anyone on Zoom?
Yes, on Zoom, we have Eric.
Welcome, if you would. Please go ahead and confirm your name for the, your full name for the record, and then you'll have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Eric Oost, and I was not intending to speak this evening, but I was inspired by a couple other folks who spoke. Mr. Amzler referenced the public engagement, and I'm currently a member of the Council of Neighborhood Association Board. And one of the topics that we've discussed is how to improve the engagement of neighborhoods and residents who live in those neighborhoods with local government, also between neighborhoods. And so I encourage the public engagement director to reach out to our president, Cynthia Romo, and we'll do the same, but I look forward to that. I think that would be a great, great initiative and an area of improvement. Another commenter mentioned the cost of housing and how it influences homelessness. And I want to draw your attention to one of the slides in the packet, and that would be on page 65, that reflected on the assessed value in 2018 and then 2022. And I noticed that the percentage change was miscalculated. I think rather than being 22.7 and 35%, it should be 29.5 and 53.9%. And across the entire city of Bloomington, a 53, almost 54% increase in the assessed property value drives the cost of housing upwards significantly. And then in terms of transparency and access to data, I want to compliment everyone who's been involved in the creation of the Be Clear Data Portal. And recently, the registered rental data was updated. And one of the issues with that data set has been that there were numerous duplicates in there. And so the data set has been, appears, looks like deduplicated, but there is significantly less information being provided. For instance, the occupancy load for each rental is no longer included. So I would ask perhaps that that data set could be reviewed and perhaps some of those data components brought back. Thank you.
Mr. Lucas, any additional commenters?
Not that I see, no.
Okay. That'll conclude our first of two periods of public comment, and that takes us to appointments to boards and commissions. Do any of the interview teams have appointments to make? Councilmember Sims? Can you speak on your mic?
Too many microphones there. Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we appoint or make an appointment to the Human Rights Commission, Ms. Emma Williams to seat C1. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. Are there additional appointments? Seeing none, that takes us to legislation for second readings and resolutions, and specifically to appropriation ordinance 23-01.
Madam Chair, I move that appropriation ordinance 2301 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only by the deputy clerk.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That passes. Will the deputy clerk please read?
Appropriat, appropriation ordinance 2301 to specially appropriate the current balance of the opioid settlement fund to help address the impacts of the opioid crisis on city and county residents. Synopsis, this ordinance appropriates $391,906 of opioid settlement funds for the purpose of making grants in 2023 to community organizations assisting residents of Bloomington experiencing negative impacts from the opioid crisis.
I move that appropriation ordinance 2301 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. And do we have an amendment?
Oh, do you want to take care of that first?
It's a, it's a minor housekeeping matter, so why don't we do that first?
Okay. I move amendment one to appropriation ordinance 2301.
Second.
Thank you. And Mr. Lucas, do you want to provide the background on this?
Yes, and thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, for introducing this. The council will remember, at the end of last year, you all introduced an appropriation ordinance originally numbered 2206 for appropriating certain bond proceeds. That item of legislation carried over till the new year through an amendment that was renumbered 2301. The item before you tonight, through an oversight, was, was also numbered 2301. So this amendment would simply renumber this current appropriation ordinance as 2303 for internal record-keeping purposes. That's, that's the extent of the amendment.
Are there any questions on the amendment? Let's go to public comment. Is there any public comment on the amendment to renumber appropriation ordinance 2301 to 2303? See, and, oh.
I'll, I'll extend the invitation. If there are any members of the public on Zoom that would like to comment on this amendment, please let us know by using the raise hand button or sending us a chat. I see no takers.
Okay, seeing none, let's come back to council for any final comment or questions. Seeing none, Deputy Clerk Stoll, will you please call the roll? On amendment 01.
Councilmember Rosenberg?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rallo? Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes eight zero, and appropriation ordinance 23-01 is now appropriation ordinance So with that, I believe we have Ms. Callender Anderson or Ms. Kate with us tonight.
Good evening, councilmembers. Corporation Council, Beth Kate. I'm going to start off tonight on appropriation ordinance 2303, which asks council to appropriate, as you heard, a little over $391,000, which is the current balance of our opioid settlement fund for use by the Community and Family Resources Department for a variety of things that Ms. Callender Anderson is going to explain. I just wanted to say a few words to just kind of refresh everyone on where this money is and where it comes from. As you may recall, the city of Bloomington is participating in national settlements, which have been negotiated by the state of Indiana and various other states just about a little over a year ago. We opted into the first of these settlements with a manufacturer and several distributors, and that has produced some settlement payments, which began in late 2022 and will continue out through 2038, actually. So we received in late 2022 payments into two separate funds. One is an unrestricted fund, and one is restricted under state law. The, about 70% of the money we receive is restricted in its use to a variety of uses involving opioid treatment and other forms of assistance that are kind of under the broad heading of abatement. And it's a broad list, but the funds need to go for things within that broad list. And then about 30% of the funds are unrestricted. And so what you're seeing in appropriation ordinance 2303 is the combined total of the 2022 payments into those two funds, restricted and unrestricted. And what the app board is asking is that you appropriate those funds and only those funds, so only the 2022 payments from that settlement toward the programs that Ms. Callender Anderson is going to describe. So I, I will be happy to answer any questions about anything related to the settlement or the payments or anything like that, if you have them. But otherwise, I'm going to turn it over to Beverly, and she can talk about what the money will be used for. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Beverly Callender Anderson, Director of the Community and Family Resources Department. And we're requesting the appropriation of the current balance, as Corporate Counsel Kate said, of the 2022 opioid settlement funds in the amount of $391,906. And as you may know, each year, CFRD coordinates the downtown outreach grant, which provides funding for nonprofit agencies that support Bloomington's unhoused residents or those of, in danger of becoming homeless. This investment of funds into local nonprofits has resulted in outreach staff who work with their agencies and in collaboration with the city to assure that residents who are living in the, on the streets, excuse me, are receiving needed services, including healthcare, and that they are aware of the resources, such as payment for transportation for those who have come from out of town to go back to their home communities, as well as case management, navigator services, syringe disposal boxes, and the like. In 2023, the downtown outreach grant cycle, during that outreach grant cycle, the request total was $544,771. That's more than double the $250,000 we had allocated for that purpose. The grant selection committee evaluated each grant and finally got the number whittled down to $320,660, which was still $70,500 more than available. The committee felt further cuts would not allow enough funding for even partial services to be provided by many of the agencies. Additionally, the city and the county have collaborated on a matching grant through the Family Social Service Administration to address substance use disorder in Monroe County. The city's portion of the match is 100, is $100,000, which will include a naloxone supply and education program, drug medication and syringe disposal units, along with educational resources for the proper disposal of medication and syringes. In order to collaborate with county government on its upcoming programs addressing substance use disorder and to make the downtown outreach grant committee's recommendation, recommended total of $320,660 for local agencies, we request and recommend the council approve this appropriation, this appropriation. $170,500 of this total has already been outlined. The remaining funds will be maintained by CFRD to be used to address similar community needs consistent with the types of abatement expenditures approved by the settlement document and state law. And I can take any questions you have.
Thank you. Questions from council? Councilmember Volan?
Thanks for the presentation. I'm, I'm trying to figure out, like, what is the long-term effect of, I mean, was this money that you're asking us to appropriate now, was it going to be saved up and perhaps interest gained on it to do more later? Or was it, I mean, why didn't we allocate all the money we received in 2022 for whatever purposes? That's the part I'm not following.
So are you asking about the downtown outreach grant or the opioid settlement funding?
The opioid settlement funding.
So the opioid settlement funding, I mean, I'll let you talk to it, but, I mean, it was received, and it wasn't necessarily going to be saved up. We just hadn't asked for the appropriation yet, the allocation yet.
Why not allocate it all?
We are asking for what our to, our total 2022 balance to be allocated. We haven't received, there will be future payments, which we have not received yet, so we're asking for the total $391,906.
You're not asking for the 320, 660, you're asking for, because that's the part that's confusing me. You're asking for 391.
Right. So 320, 660 was the, where we came to on the downtown outreach grants.
Okay, now, I, I did make that distinction before. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes, thank you. You were speaking about, this was a collaboration between FSSA and the county and the city. Could you explain a little bit further as to who the partnerships are for this particular use?
So FSSA issued a request for, a request for proposals for a matching grant, and the county is taking the lead on it. And we are, we have asked, we were asked, requested to do, to come in as a collaborator. And so I know that it's the city and the county. I don't, I don't know if there are any other collaborators, but it would be the two of us.
And then the decision, you say the county is basically taking the lead. The decision for the uses of this particular matching appropriation, it sounds to be it's more for harm reduction programming with the education for naloxone and the syringe disposal.
So the city's portion of it is, yes.
The city's portion is for the harm.
And so I know that the county has some other, I don't want to really speak for the county, because, but they, they have some other uses as well, but, but a lot of that focuses on harm reduction as well.
And I guess my next question would have to do with future payments for this particular amount of money that we as a city have and the county have, could go more for treatment options, for recovery options, for providing services for people wanting to become clean and sober. Is that in the future, or is that even being talked about at this level?
So we haven't talked about it yet. I mean, it, it could go for anything that's within the guidelines of, you know, the, the settlement funding. So, yeah, but it could. But, but I haven't, we haven't talked to the county about that. We're basically just dealing with what was before us.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Seeing none, let's go to public comment. Is there public comment here in chambers? If I could have a show of hands? And Mr. Lucas, could you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if there are members of the public that wish to comment on this item that are joining us via Zoom, please let us know by raising your hand in Zoom. You can find that raise hand button in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak, and we will recognize you that way. I will also note that tonight's public comment section provide, is the statutorily required public hearing on this item.
Thank you. Let's come back here in chambers. If you would, please state your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, President Scambaluri. Eric Spoonmore, Gregory Bloomington, Chamber of Commerce. I wasn't planning to speak on this item tonight, but I did see that one of the potential uses of funding for this would be for an expansion of the syringe services program for harm reduction purposes. Just want to remind you all that the county council recently appropriated a $25,000 grant for syringe services programs about two weeks ago. That will supply the county and the Indiana Recovery Alliance with about 265,000 syringes for our community to be used. I did a little further digging on that, and because I wanted to know, as you know, I was on the county council a, a while back, and when the syringe services program was put into place. And when the syringe services program was put into place, when we authorized that, it was sold to us as a syringe exchange program. And so the idea was you would bring in a used syringe and get a clean one back. My understanding is that's not the case anymore. It's more of how many syringes do you need, and that's what we'll give you. So we did ask how many syringes were collected for those 265,000 last year that were distributed with that $25,000 grant. 708 were collected back. So in other words, about 264,000 syringes were unaccounted for. And it seems like we may have a glut of syringes. I don't know, but I know that this puts a tremendous burden on our public safety staff, whether that's BPD or our fire department, both of which units we know are concerningly understaffed at this point. And so, you know, when we put more of these syringes into the community, that puts more of a workload on those folks. And, you know, at this point, I think, you know, we're just asking that we think about how many syringes are being put into the community, and what is the data being collected with these? And is the Syringe Services Program meeting the needs of the community as it was originally put into place, I don't know, four, five, six years ago? And we're one of eight counties that currently have a Syringe Services Program. I know there were a lot more several years ago, but we're one of eight right now in the state of Indiana that still has one of these programs. Thank you.
Thank you. And next here in town, or here in town, here in chambers, Mr. Cassidy, I believe. Mr. Lucas, while you're checking in, Mr. Lucas, do you have any takers on Zoom?
Not at the moment, no.
Okay, thank you. If you would, please share your name for the record, and then, and then you'll have three minutes.
Randy Cassidy, I'm a community member. In regards to following up on Mr. Spoonamore's conversation regards to it, the question I have in regards to the harm reduction, public safety, and the syringe program, while these are vital services to take care of our residents that are in need, the aspect of how we would identify those syringes that are put out in our community that are coming from our program, I, based on being around, I've picked up several syringes that have been on job sites where I've been, which has created some harm issues. And I've actually had some of my technicians say, you know, they've been thrown down. And I actually took them to the health department and asked, were these coming from our program, and how can we find out why or where they're being come from, just like, you know, tracking down where the, where it comes from. And I was told that there was no way to do that. The question I would have in regards to Ms. Callender is, is there a way to purchase syringes that would identify if it's coming from our services so that we would be able to do?
Address the chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, where we would be able to do, whether it's a color code, a, some type. I have no idea if it can be, but it's just a matter of trying to go public safety and harm reduction. They're doing a great job, but we need to identify these as we're well aware. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. But additional comments here in chambers? Please. Ms. Callender Anderson.
Hi, everyone. Forrest Gilmore, and I'm the Executive Director of Beacon Inc., and I just wanted to express my support for this amendment, this ordinance, what's it called? Appropriation, thank you. And we certainly are a beneficiary of that. And in particular, I wanted to share what it does, which is it supports our street outreach program. And literally without this funding, Beacon does not have a street outreach program. So it's incredibly important. And one of the most things, most important things that Beacon does through its street outreach program is help people access the coordinated entry system, which is how we help house people and move people into permanent supportive housing and rapid rehousing. So without that kind of funding, we actually lose that ability to connect with people on the street and provide those, that basic service for them. We also use this funding to provide transportation assistance for family reunification. So, for example, if someone lives in another community, has another, a home in another community, but is stuck here and is unable to get the transportation they need to get back home, we provide funding for that, including primarily through bus tickets, but sometimes through other means like Uber or whatever, if there's not a bus route there. And just to acknowledge the problem or the challenge related to this, and why Downtown Outreach continues to be a really important need in our community, I think it's important for us to know that homelessness in our community has actually been about the same going back to about 2015. And this kind of defies a myth in our community that homelessness is exploding or skyrocketing or growing out of proportion. But actually, the numbers have been fairly steady going back to, going back to 2015, ranging between 320 and 340 on, according to our PIT counts, which is a daytime, one-day representation of amounts experiencing homelessness. But what we have seen that has increased quite substantially going back to 2019, we saw a big increase in two things in 2019. We saw a significant increase in the number of people experiencing homelessness claiming they have a severe mental illness. And we've also seen that number increase dramatically, and the people say they have a severe substance use disorder. So those two numbers have increased quite significantly, more than doubled from what they were prior to that time. We saw that specifically start in 2019, and it's more or less stayed around the same number since then, but a big leap from 2018 to 2019. And that's, that's what people say when they say homelessness is exploding, is I think they're seeing these mental health issues and substance use issues. And that's why this program is so important to relate, to work with those people in those situations. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments here in chambers? Or on Zoom? Ms. Callender Anderson, did you want to comment? I noticed you had a thought.
Thank you. I just wanted to address the concerns of Mr. Spoonamore and Mr. Cassidy. Nowhere, I mean, not in what we are asking for, funding for, does not expand the syringe program. We're talking about disposal. And it really actually addresses some of the concerns that they had, that there are syringes being left on the street. And so we're looking at increasing ways for proper disposal of syringes, medications that people have around the house, could be, could be drugs, or it could just be medications that you've gotten that have gotten old that, you know, you don't know what to do with, or you can't get someplace to dispose of them. And so there will be units to do that kind of disposal and education around, around that. Also, we talked about naloxone. So the harm reduction part of it that we're talking about does not increase the number of syringes, and it's not funding, this funding in particular, is not for that. And so I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Great. Thank you for clarifying. Let's come back to council for questions. Councilmember Volan.
So I wanted to follow up on the thing that Mr. Gilmore said. I'm more concerned about that. I'd like to know the data that he's citing. Is that collected by Beacon? Is that collected by a third party? Is that data that the city administration is familiar with? How, when, I mean, I'd like to be able to say, for example, what he just said, that the number of homeless have not really changed since 2015. It's the, you know, what he cited. Are you familiar with the sources he's talking about?
So I am assuming that his information is coming from the point-in-time counts. So the point-in-time count is done annually in January, sometime when it's really, really cold. But, but it's done annually. And then the state gathers data from all over the state, and then we get those results. So, yeah, so I am familiar with it. And it's, and it's actually available publicly on the state website.
Would you mind characterizing the point-in-time counts? I mean, would you agree with Mr. Gilmore that on those citations? Or is all the data he cited, it's not all from the point-in-time count? Right?
Yeah, I think, I do believe it is from the point-in-time.
So the number of people reporting mental illness?
Yes. So, yeah, it all is from the point-in-time count. And so it's, that's the way it's aggregated by, they have different categories that you can see those trends over the years.
Okay. I mean, I regret to admit that I was unfamiliar with the fact that that data was not sort of privately collected, that it's, I take it it's on the Be Clear portal?
It's, it's not on Be Clear, but it is on the state of Indiana portal, and I can send you the link.
I would very much like that link.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you very much for the information. Appreciate it. How, how does the treatment for incarcerated populations kind of like dovetail with, with the settlement and what we're doing at the city?
So I would, I would assume that the treatment for incarcerated populations will fall with the county. And the county also received a part of the opioid settlement that was distributed by the state, and so I'm assuming that they are taking care of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Or is there a final comment? Seeing none, Madam Clerk? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Councilmember Volan.
I was making a final comment, and that's why I was pointing to her, and she was pointing at me.
And nobody made a final comment.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to say I'm very much in support of this appropriation, and I'm pleased to see that our opioid settlement funds, the first part, trickle in over the next, what, 18 years? Kind of a ridiculous scheme, but that our first installment of the funds will go to good use, and that we, and I'm also pleased to see that there was a partnership with the county for that grant funding, and look forward to hopefully hearing a positive outcome of that application. So thank you, Ms. Callender Anderson, for your work on this, and Ms. Kate, for your legal advice.
Thank you. Additional comments? Will the deputy clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rola?
Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenberger?
Yes.
And that passes 8-0. Thank you, everyone.
All right, we are ready to move that appropriation ordinance 2302 be read by the deputy clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Will the deputy clerk please read?
Appropriation Ordinance 2302 to specially appropriate funds from the General Fund for Construction of the Trades District Tech Center and Associated Construction Management Services. Synopsis: This ordinance appropriates $3,613,91 from the General Fund to help pay for construction of the Trades District Tech Center and Associated Construction Management Services secured by the Dimension Mill.
I move that appropriation ordinance 2302 be adopted.
Second. Thank you. And who do we have starting us off this evening? Welcome, if you would. Share your name for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Pat Heas, and I'm the Executive Director for the Mill. The Mill is Bloomington's award-winning entrepreneurship center. Thank you to President Scambalary and the rest of city council for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here with John Fernandez, Bloomington's former mayor, and one of the Mill's newest staffers, to make a case for funding the tech center, which is a critical investment we're asking you to make in Bloomington's innovation ecosystem. Before I introduce John, I want to highlight two other investments Bloomington has made in our innovation ecosystem, which have paved the way for the one that we're asking you to consider tonight. The Mill is a public-private partnership with the city of Bloomington. They've been supportive from the beginning and have walked in lockstep with us since. Five years ago, some folks much smarter than I decided to renovate a century-old furniture factory to bring Bloomington into the digital economy. They transformed a vacant building with no utilities into an entrepreneurship center, and my staff turned that into the fastest growing co-working space in Indiana. We've added vital programming to build our innovation ecosystem further. Flywell Fund is Bloomington's venture capital firm that focuses on early-stage technology startups. In partnership with Elevate Ventures, Indiana's venture capital firm, our startups have attracted more investment in the last five years than the previous 10. Coda Academy upskills the unemployed and underemployed in jobs of the future like cybersecurity, IT management, and web development. With Ivy Tech, we train 100 folks annually. In our current cohort, 50% don't hold a college degree, and 80% are minorities. This inclusive innovation program is so successful that other counties have asked us to expand. So this summer, we're expanding to Washington and Crawford counties. The RDC's second investment was in January, when they executed a management agreement with the Mill to market, develop, and manage the Trades District. Our first-order business was recruiting the leader for this initiative. When I look at the background needed for this job, real estate, startups, investment, economic development, and experience at the federal and local government levels, the Venn diagram has a picture of John Fernandez right in the middle. After two successful terms as mayor, he worked for Obama in economic development, then worked for the world's largest law firm in startup investing. We found not just the best person in Bloomington, but the country. And with that, it's my pleasure to introduce John Fernandez, the Mill's Senior Vice President of Innovation and Strategic Partnerships.
Thank you. Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you, members of council. Thanks, Pat, for those nice introductory remarks. As Pat said, we're really grateful.
You confirm?
I am John Fernandez, yes, I am. And I'm very happy to be back in Bloomington, working on issues that I deeply care about. I want to add my thanks to the administration and the city council for all the investments you've made to date in supporting the Trades District, its vision, as well specifically the Mill, and hopefully now the Trades District Tech Center. This investment tonight is about more than just a building. It's really about helping us build the capacity we need to support the kind of economic growth we need in this fourth industrial revolution that we're all living in. If you want to go ahead and flip up us, I've got a few slides I want to share with you. I'm not going to go through everything that was in the memo that we submitted to the council, and we certainly would look forward to your questions tonight. Do I have a control for this? So as Pat mentioned, the Mill's grateful to be in a position to be leading the development for the Trades District, and specifically the Tech Center. But we're part of a larger team. Certainly, the city of Bloomington, its Redevelopment Commission, along with the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation or Critical Partners. In fact, they were the co-applicants on the EDA grant that the city was awarded in 2021. We also have partners at Indiana University and at Ivy Tech who participated in that grant application as well. Members of all those membership or supporting team members are here tonight, and you'll hear from them shortly. We also have joining us virtually a couple of our colleagues at Studio Access. They're the design firm in Indianapolis that's been doing the development work to date on this particular building. And we also have with us, appropriately, members of the administration that can speak specifically to some of the technical issues related to the use of funds and the appropriation itself. So what I want to do is really talk about why we're doing this. And again, it's not just about a building, but it's really about how we're building the kind of community we want. Bloomington and Monroe County is a laggard. We have so many good things going on in our community, but the data is the data. Our median household income lags behind peer cities across Indiana and across the country. And that's despite having one of the highest educated workforces anywhere. So our people are learning more, but they're earning less. And part of the reason for that is the makeup of our employment base. And that's why it's important to build the capacity to kind of build these high-growth, tech-oriented companies that can support what we all want, which is a community where there's some great opportunities for our people to make a good living. And the Tech Center, if you look at the tech sector... And the tech center, if you look at the tech sector, the earnings across all different education levels tend to have a premium compared to other sectors. So if you're looking at folks who might have a, you know, just a high school diploma in tech-related companies, they actually benefit about 12% more than non-tech companies. And with a BA, you're looking at even a larger bump. So our, our theory of the case here is that if we can grow more startups, more scale-ups, and even more mature companies locating here in Bloomington, hopefully even in the Trades District or the Tech Center, we'll have the kind of robust economy that's going to enable us to provide for the kind of career opportunities that we want for, for our people. And that's really what this tech center is about. And the timing of this requested investment, it couldn't be better. I mean, if you look at our regional economy, the Tech Center and the Trades District are just about exactly halfway between Indianapolis and Crane, and Westgate at Crane. So, I mean, we're really well-positioned to become that kind of hub to drive this regional strategy. In Indianapolis, there's tremendous resources, for sure. The new 16 tech development, along with the work that Indiana University is doing there in Purdue with the reinvestment around Luddy and some of the engineering programs is really important. Crane with Westgate, there's significant new investments related to the CHIPS Act and many private employers who are located there. We already have great relationships with many of these assets, and they'd like to come to the Mill, to the Trades District as a great hub for the kind of work we're, we're trying to do. So with the development here, we're going to be really well-positioned to be that kind of innovation hub for the region. We'll be well-positioned to create new public-private partnerships across the region, but most importantly, we'll be able to be a home here in Bloomington for these emerging industries as they grow. You know, we certainly have lots of assets. We are really asset-rich in Bloomington and in our region, and we need to capitalize on those assets. Many of these important ingredients have been working together, but I think most folks in our ecosystem would acknowledge that we're not working as well together as we can. And we need to have programs and initiatives that deliberately build the connections between this wealth of assets and get them focused on the same kind of key priorities in terms of where we're putting a stake in the ground over the kind of economic growth that we want, that's sustainable, that's high-wage and high-growth. And we think those assets exist, and we believe that the Tech Center, through its programming, as well as its location in the Trades District adjacent to the Mill, provides a great opportunity to solidify those relationships and actually activate our network more effectively. So programming at the, at the Tech Center will, you know, really target that kind of commercialization and acceleration of commercialization of some of the intellectual property coming out of Crane, coming out of Indiana University, providing technical assistance to help these emerging growth companies get the support they need through other kinds of either private or public funding sources, as well as, and critically important, is working the network of subject matter experts in these key industries that know how to help growth-stage companies grow. And so it's, you know, having the relationships in the supply network, having the relationship with the potential customers, those are critical, critical parts of our infrastructure that we need to really build and activate going forward. So we talked about the building itself. We hope and believe that this building's going to set a, a new standard for our office development in the city of Bloomington. What's proposed is about a 22,000-square-foot Class A office building that's designed to meet the minimum LEED Silver certification, so we think that's important to kind of drive home the values that we all share here in Bloomington regarding the kinds of development we want to see happen. Some of the, you know, as I mentioned before, we do have a couple of representatives from Studio Access joining virtually, so when we get into the Q and A, if you want to go deeper into some of the building design issues, they're prepared and more than happy to answer any questions you have there. But most importantly, some of the key attributes are the solar array on the roof. We think it'll generate, you know, at least 25% of electricity needed to run the building. The green roof is certainly there, along with the underwater or underground stormwater collection systems that we think will be really important to mitigate any of the stormwater runoff issues. The materials that are being selected to finish the building are all being carefully looked at in terms of supply chain to have minimum impacts on other important sustainability factors. Like I said, we've got folks here from the design team that can address some of the questions you might have. In terms of the investment itself, what's proposed, we believe, is a really good leverage model. So when the, the city of Bloomington initially received its $3.5 million grant from the EDA, the Redevelopment Commission made a preliminary commitment of almost $2 million. This was back in 2021. Since then, we've had the benefit of, you know, further design and engineering development work performed by Studio Access. We've had the not-so-pleasant developments of, of high inflation in the construction industry. It's not unique to Bloomington, but it's certainly something that we are experiencing here as well. And so the total estimated cost for the building is 8.5 million. That includes all the hard costs, soft costs, and a small, you know, fund to support additional tenant improvements as we recruit tenants for the building. But the important part of this slide is not the cost, but really the benefit. When the grant was submitted back in 2021, the IU Public Policy Institute did a feasibility study for the applicants from the city and the BDC. They ran a model and determined that over a 10-year period, we would anticipate about a $218 million total economic impact. That includes about 866 new jobs, almost $52 million in new private investment, and at the end of the day, we think that's a pretty strong return on investment. So essentially, the city of Bloomington is going to have a 22,000-square-foot Class A office building, sustainably built for the price of $5 million. So we think it's a pretty good deal for the city. But again, the most important ROI isn't necessarily the big economic numbers, but the actual, the impact on people who live here or want to live here who need better-paying jobs. Again, we lag, we lagged our peers even before the pandemic, and there's pretty good evidence that post-pandemic, that our rate of recovery has been slower than other peer cities. And part of the reason for that is that we need to have a innovation ecosystem that meets the moment of the kind of economy that we're in. We have tremendous assets, great organizations who have worked over the years in this space, but there's an opportunity, in fact, a need to up our game. And again, here too, when we look at the, you know, the work, this is not for just, you know, folks with master's degrees coming out of Luddy, which we hope they will be here in droves, but the kind of economy we're trying to build really is inclusive in that it can, you know, it can create an environment where lots of people have access to better-paying jobs. And many of our private sector partners here are doing wonderful work, but we need more of them to create the kind of opportunities that we need. So the time is right. We have an opportunity to build on the momentum that the city's already invested. We have the opportunity to build on the momentum of not just the Mill, but the Kiln Collective, the new investment at the showers, administration building, the investment in the Trades District parking garage, the investments that Indiana University is making with their renewed interest in regional and statewide economic development, with the renewed investments and new investments through READY, the state's program, through the investments at CHIPS and the federal investments at an unprecedented level around the CHIPS industry. This is a great moment for us to continue to build the kind of economy we want and leverage all the investments that have already been made to date. So I'm going to be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but before I do that, our partners, who are part of the grant and part of the program, are here, and I'd like to give them an opportunity to be more articulate than I was in advancing this project, and we hope that the council will support this appropriation. I think first up, we have Pete Yonkman, the CEO of Cook Group. Thank you.
Hi, folks. I'm Pete Yonkman, president of Cook Group, Cook Medical. Thanks. Appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Dimension Mill and the new Trades District. I've been involved in the Dimension Mill for quite a while, so personally, I've been an investor in companies that have been started there. I, my wife and I have donated to start up, to facilitate startups, to facilitate education within the Mill. I was a member of the board, that was one of the original boards that was founding the Mill. And at a professional level, with Cook, we have been a supporter, both financially and with resources. It's been a great opportunity for us to interact with people that we might not interact with before, to see what's happening with new technologies, to see what's on the cutting edge. And so we have been, I, both personally and from a, from a Cook level, think this is a very good project and are very happy to continue supporting it. And I want to tell you why, because we always assess, you know, as, as years go on, is this where we want to continue to invest? And so maybe I just share our thinking on why we continue to support the Mill and the, and the idea of the Trades District. The first thing is the, the team that's there. I'm fortunate, I get to travel around different parts of our state and other states, and I frequently have the ability to tour organizations like this. A lot of communities have Dimension Mills of some sort, and it's interesting to walk. Not all of them are successful. And when you walk into them, not all of them are vibrant, not all of them are occupied, not all of them have, are building startups. It takes leadership, and it takes a team that's passionate about doing that, and we're very fortunate, I think, in this community to have Pat and now John Fernandez and his team and all their team. They have done a remarkable job building this organization. Quite frankly, it's been pleasantly surprising to see how well they have done managing what's a very challenging issue to do, something that's very hard to do, to bring coalitions together like this. So we start with a management team, and we say, do we trust them? Do we, do they have the right vision? Are they doing the right things for our community? And so far, we have been very, very pleased that way. Then I'll just tell you about some of my experiences that we've had there, and one of the experiences, I'll just share this with you. We've had people leave Cook and go work for startup companies at the Mill. It's great. But we've also had people who have had startups, and they're working, and they decide they want to leave and come work at Cook. I think that's the idea, right? I think that's what we're trying to do, is create an ecosystem that allows people to learn from each other and to move around and to have opportunities. Also, I was part of a group that was looking to create an organization that could help support student athletes in the new concept of NIL. You may have heard about this. And so we were asking, where should they work? Where should they be a part of the community to start their startup, essentially? And the answer for them clearly was, we want to be at the Mill, and we want to be around people who have that same energy and who have that same vibrancy. And so they were located there, and they're doing very well. Just so happens that down the hall from them is a startup company that's helping student athletes build brands, and they're coordinating, they have lunch together and start creating new ideas. And so I think for that, this combination of things, the, the vibrancy with which the team has built the organization, the importance of the community, and then the ecosystem that it helps to develop here, I think is attractive for a lot of reasons. You can look at the job creation, but I'll say simply from a recruiting perspective, if we're trying to recruit people, people want to see vibrancy, they want to see new ideas, and this is really a part of that. They see and they go, this is working, and we think Bloomington has a vision, a vision for the future. So I'm very supportive of this. I know a lot of people have talked about remote, remote working. Do we need an office space? You know, the world's changed a lot, but I do think particularly in these areas where you have startups, where you have people who are struggling to create new ideas, new companies, there is a real value in being together, in being a part of an ecosystem, and learning from each other. Not only that, but it creates a nidus, a center of gravity, if you will, for organizations like Cook, for Indiana University, for the city of Indianapolis, to engage and start to work together. So just want to say I very much support this organization, and I thank you, I appreciate your consideration, and congratulations to the team at the Mill for the work they've done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yonkman. So are there additional elements of the presentation itself? We'll have opportunities for public comment to speak in support of, of the appropriation ordinance. Are there additional elements of the presentation before we go to council questions?
We're part of the program.
All right. Welcome. If you would please introduce yourself.
Yes, I'm Valerie Pinia. I am with the Office of University Relations at Indiana University. Thank you for the council, for having your interest this evening. You know, Indiana University has been and continues to be an avid supporter of the development of the Trades District, from our initial and ongoing support to the Mill to providing the money for the feasibility study that was prior to the EDA application. IU has recognized that in all of us, it is our best interest to invest in this community wherever and whenever it's possible. When it was announced that Bloomington had been awarded the $3.5 million grant, I remember turning to our vice president at the time and saying, you know, this is truly going to be a great return on our investment. Creating a major innovation hub for the Bloomington region is not only desirable, is critical to our long-term efforts to grow the city's overall economy and develop a place where many of our IU graduating students can stay, thrive in their work, build a family, and call Bloomington home. In IU's soon-to-be-released 2030 strategic plan, all three pillars address meeting the needs for the changing dynamics that are in our state's workforce, and expanding efforts to translate research and creativity, creative activity to the public. This is through a shared commitment in innovations, discoveries, and innovation with the goal of reaching economic vitality across the state, and in particular, in our home bases. Building a community, and in this case, a district, that fully embraces entrepreneurship and commercialization is vital to connecting what is happening at the university to the community. The IU Office of Innovation and Commercialization has already committed to deliver in-kind consulting and advisory services. IU Ventures, which is part of our unit, continues to assist IU student, faculty, and alumni startups, all who will benefit from the Tech Center's assets. And my office, University Relations, is working specifically on identifying opportunities that will become available through the CHIPS and Science Act, Indiana Ready 2.0, and importantly, the Lilly Endowment College and Community Collaboration Initiative. We recognize that our community is at a tipping point. Indiana University has moved in this direction because of our 2030 plan. We know we have to be completely involved. That tipping point is that magic moment when an idea, a trend, and in this case, an opportunity crosses a threshold and spreads like a wildfire. We are hoping that you all will support the spark that's going to take to the flame that will make Bloomington really, truly an ecosystem for not only great business ideas, but a place that people know if you want to do something cool, you do it in Bloomington. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fernandez, are there other elements to the presentation, or would you like to reserve some for public comment?
I, I can read the room. We, we do have other co-applicants here as well, from the Redevelopment Commission, the BDC, and Ivy Tech, but I, if it's the council's desire to move on to Q and A, and if you have questions for the administration around some of the, you know, technical aspects of the funding, or if you have questions for Studio Access, we're happy to keep moving, if that's your pleasure.
Or we could do both, just in that order. So what is the will of council? Let's go to council questions, if we may. Councilmember Volan.
Thank you. Also, I want to not only welcome back Mayor Fernandez, but acknowledge that he is, among other things, also a former member of this body, so welcome back, council member. So welcome back, Councilmember Fernandez. You say that, one thing I want to note, you said that there would be 866 new jobs estimated as a result of this. I didn't catch who estimated that.
It was the Indiana University Public Policy Institute. They are one of the think tanks through the O'Neill School.
Okay, that's helpful. Well, I mean, I know that such numbers take into account, it's kind of a broad number. One thing I want to know is, how many people will physically, how many employees will physically fit in the new building that's being considered?
Well...
What's the capacity of the building going to be?
Well, the total square, gross square footage is 22,000 square feet, give or take. The leasable space, because we have some social space, we have some meeting room space, training space, but the total leasable space is 12,577 square feet. It's really hard to predict how many actual full-time employees will be supported in that facility, because as we all are experiencing, a lot of companies have, you know, hybrid kind of employment. So I think the rule of thumb for office space is usually about three people per thousand square feet. I'm sure that Drew or Ashley from Studio Access could address that better than I, but you can do a rough calculation.
Well, so that gives me a rough calculation of 36 to 40? I mean, if it's three people per thousand square feet, and we have 12,000 square feet leasable space, it's maybe 40 employees that would fit in that building.
My math is wrong, so I'll defer that question to Ashley and Drew.
Why don't we get the skinny from them?
But if you think about the, you know, you have a lot of people that work hybrid, and they support other kinds of...
Well, that's what I'm trying to get to, is like, what is the value proposition here? Why do we even need the building if these companies are ready to go? Perhaps you can talk about the role of Class A office space, why we, I mean, do we not have any in Bloomington, and so on?
I'd say we don't. In fact, we have very little spec office space at all that's appropriate for this kind of collaboration space, as Pete Yonkman was talking about. There's something special about having companies that are in these related industries co-located, and having places for engagement and collaboration. So it's important to not just have, you know, a cube farm in a building maximizing the space, but having quality space that people actually want to come to. You know, most people don't want to go to the office just to stare at a screen, they want to come to engage. And so building a space that really has the kind of amenities, the environment, the surrounding, if we're successful with other developments in the Trade District, really create a kind of very dynamic hub where people are going to want to be. And companies will pay a premium lease to be in those locations for talent attraction and retention.
So if we could ask Studio Access to explain, because right now, you're suggesting that maybe 5% of the total jobs we created would be housed in the building, and I can't believe that the number's that low.
The way that they calculate the total jobs is direct and induced. So part of the direct are the companies themselves that are physically located, there are also the jobs created in building the facility, but also the supporting, you know, companies that are part of that industry. So it's all the jobs related to the activities in the building, not just the individual tenant organizations.
Well, with all due respect to the construction trades, I want to set aside the jobs that are essentially one-off for the construction of the building and get to, you know, when this building is firing on all cylinders, how much continuing employment is there as a result of it?
Yeah.
Is Studio Access here, online?
Yeah, they are.
Be able to unmute now?
Yes. My name is Ashley Thornberry, and I am the project manager of Studio Access, and I can address the question. So my understanding is the question is, how many tenants could occupy the building? Is that correct?
How many individual employees? Yes.
Yes. So with the tenant, using the building code at 100 square feet per person at a maximum capacity, there can be up to 150 tenants in the building at one single time. When John was talking about the way that we have the tenant spaces divided up, it is flexible to meet the needs of any startup company that were to move into it. So depending on the size of the company, walls can be built within the tenant space to divide as necessary. But from a building code standpoint, it would be a maximum capacity of 150 people.
I mean, I've got more, but I'll defer to other members. Thank you, so far.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes, thank you, and welcome, Mayor Fernandez. We appreciate you being a part of this new venture, and thank you for the presentation so far. My question has to do with the development of the entire, it's 12 acres, right? That's considered part of the Trades District. Aside from the Tech Center, that obviously is going to be the priority here, what recruiting plans do you have for attracting other, maybe more fully established tech companies to start, you know, developing along the whole property?
Yeah, I think that's a great question, and it's early days for me. So I, you know, the city, through the city council and other organizations have, you know, over the years, outlined a fairly clear vision in some regards for what we'd like to see happen in the Trades District. Those plans probably need some refreshing to reflect the current marketplace, but, you know, in my opinion, I think probably the most important thing I've heard, as I've gone out and interviewed lots of different stakeholders, I've visited other facilities, Indianapolis, West Lafayette, virtually in other parts of the country. There's got to be a defined kind of destination. I mean, we've got to create an identity for the Trades District that is unique to that space, and we think the ingredients are there, potentially. But it can't, you know, we're going to have to have more than just offices, because that's kind of, you know, just not very exciting. So when we start thinking about other kinds of mixed uses that might be able to come into the district, that provide more amenities, you know, restaurants, places for people to meet, I mean, maybe workforce housing, although the way the plans have been identified for the Trades District, the land to the west of Roger Street has been prioritized for more housing. So we think there's an opportunity to create a hub that'll be an exciting place for people to be. But we're going to need to continue to work on the marketing and get busy on targeting potential developments in the area that can really feed the kind of environment we want. I mean, I don't know if that answers your question, but it's early days in regard to some of the other marketing efforts.
Too soon, but you do have a vision.
Yeah, I mean, we have ideas. There's been good proposals floated around, and I just don't want to get over my skis on any of those.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Additional round one questions. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Fernandez, for your presentation, and to the supporters here. So my main questions are about the CREED funds, and so I'm not sure who could best answer them. The, were, was CREED always envisioned as a funding source for this project, or was it only after, you know, the, a few years passed and the cost estimates increased that CREED was considered for funding?
Alex, or I don't know, Jeff's on?
Alex Carley, Director of Economics Sustainable Development. It was the latter. So we, you know, early on, the RDC made an early commitment, as Mr. Fernandez said, to, in part, actually help us get the grant to begin with. So it was a necessary initial match. And then as time progressed, in the construction design phases of a building, you get greater and greater accuracy as to what the projected cost might be. And so over the course of 18 months or so, we started to see with greater clarity what that total would end up looking like. And so it was at that point that we looked around and said, all right, what are some appropriate, applicable funding sources that could be leveraged to help to fill that gap? And that's when CREED was first considered.
Thank you. I have a couple of follow-ups, if I may. I understand that the CREED funds are, have reverted back to the city's general fund after the BIDAC was dissolved last Friday. Are they accounted for separately from the budget that the council adopted last year? Do you know?
I will maybe defer to Controller Underwood, if he's on the, he's on the call, right? Yeah. To speak specifically, I think you're asking about the exact placement within what fund it sits?
Yep.
Okay.
Doesn't appear he's on.
Is Mr. Underwood on the phone?
I don't see Mr. Underwood on the Zoom call.
So if I could get back to you with that answer, hopefully I may be able to even get it during the course of discussion this evening.
Okay, that'd be great. And then the last question in this category is, is there a plan for the use of the remaining CREED funds, which should be about $14 million if this is approved tonight?
There is no specific plan. We would suggest that despite the fact that the Industrial Development Fund has expired, and BIDAC has expired, that the original intent of those funds should be kept in mind and kept, you know, that we keep as closely aligned with the original intent as possible. But beyond that, we really haven't earmarked them for anything in particular at this time.
All right, thank you.
Additional round one questions. Round two, then. Councilmember Volan.
Assuming that approval happens now, when will the building open? And are their tenants lined up? I know that's a broad question.
Well, the importance of the ask tonight will enable us to stick to a schedule that's really important for this project, because, you know, the EDA has guidelines in terms of milestones that need to be met. And one of those milestones is that the building needs to be constructed and completely constructed in early 2025. The schedule has slipped a little bit because some of the delays during the pandemic and some of the rethinking of the building. So the short answer is that, here's a sequence, so it's not a short answer, sorry. Before we can get approval from the EDA to go to bid, we have to show that the funding has been officially encumbered. So once we have the funding confirmed, we have a little bit more work to do on the construction documents and specifications, which our colleagues from Studio Access can speak to, but we're at like 95% there. So we have to submit those documents to the EDA for their approval, which could take six weeks before we can actually bid. So that's a long way around of saying that if we can meet the schedules that we envision, we can break ground in early Q3 of 2023, and we anticipate a 14-month construction cycle.
Are their tenants lined up? I know it's a naive question.
No. We have prospects, we have interest, we have a marketing plan that we will execute against, but I can't tell you today that there are specific tenants.
Just a follow-up on this is, you mentioned earlier a concern about building design issues. Could you go into detail about that? What did you mean by?
Oh, they just fine-tune. I don't think it was issues per se, but...
Wait, I'm just, I'm quoting the phrase, you said that there were building design issues that you could mention, like what, what does that mean?
I'm not sure I understand. What I said, what I thought I said was that there was the issues of the pandemic, some of the delays related to that, and some of the design issues. And it's not, issues isn't the right term. It's just continuing to refine the design. I think, you know, the building was reduced in size a little bit, so there's some retweaking of the design, additions of more solar panels, for example. So there's some work that's been going on to refine the project.
Thank you. I've got more, but I'll withhold. Thank you.
Round two. Councilmember Smith?
Mr. Fernandez, I'm going to ask you, what's that, what would be the ongoing cost to the city as the, you know, say the project, everything's great, it's going on? What, what would be the ongoing cost, you know, annually? What's your best guess on that?
Well, the aspiration is that there won't be ongoing costs, and that will hit us, you know, a sufficient level of occupancy to actually cover all of the related expenses. The actual, the operating expenses that are projected based on the original design, and we'll have to refine those as we get the construction bids in and really have finalized costs. The utilities and some of the basic system support, operating support is about $104,000. So the original business plan projected rents around $26 per square foot. So based on that, I mean, you need to have a occupancy of about 25 to 30% to fully cover your operating expenses. That doesn't include the agreement that the city has with the mill, which we'll, you know, have to talk about in the future as well. And we anticipate, in addition to the, just the pure tenant office rental income, additional income related to some of the meeting spaces and other programming that we can do, similar to what has been very successful at the mill.
Councilmember Sims and Councilmember Sandberg?
Okay, first of all, thank you so much for the presentation. A quick comment, I really do appreciate the efforts that you've paid to be transparent and share information prior to this, and that really helps a lot, and I think it's important. So, thank you very much. This question might, well, first off, if it's appropriate, and I know we have a vision, we have some thoughts, not as much data probably as we would like, but from a future vision, and this might be more appropriate for Pat East. But with regard to job creations, and obviously, I'm really interested in how it can have a positive effect on the brain drain, which are higher educated and keeping here, but I'm also just as interested, if not more so, on a broader diversity of lower income, more racial and cultural diversity with these job creation. So can you share with us what's your vision? I understand you don't have all the facts yet and all that, but, but how do you see things?
Yeah, yeah, I'll take a stab at that. There's a lot of layers in there, there's a lot of what seem like maybe intractable problems, but aren't really that intractable if we just put our heads together and work on them. So, so brain drain, let me just address that one. So when we first started the mill, one thing that we knew that we wanted to focus on was K-12. And so we have a lot of K-12 program, and we partner with the Boys and Girls Club, we partner with the Chamber of Commerce to focus on teaching K-12 entrepreneurial skills. So this is a long-term play that does a couple of things. One is, if somebody, my daughter's in sixth grade now, we started teaching her entrepreneurial skills in the Fourth Grade Maker School Challenge. It's going to take a long time for that seed to actually grow into a business, if it turns into a business at all, right? So this is a really long-term kind of time horizon. If she doesn't decide to, that she wants to build a business, she has really great entrepreneurial skills that she's learned, like salesmanship, grit, perseverance, how to have confidence, things like that. So long-term, we think that if we build these characteristics, these skills in, in our K-12, that it will come back around to us at some point, hopefully sooner rather than later, but it is a long-term play. We do think that, let me maybe address kind of a more near-term concern, how do we, how do we prevent, prevent brain drain for folks of college age, or maybe who have recently graduated? How do we prevent them from leaving Bloomington? How do we get them to, to stay in Bloomington? So I'm mid-40s. When we first started the mill, maybe, maybe a little bit before that, there was a group of us that just said, kind of informally, there was probably 10 of us, Bloomington's our home, we want to take care of our home, and we were just obstinate about we were going to build stuff here. I sold my company in 2020, after 16... I sold my company in 2020, after sixteen years. We're a number one best place to work in, in Indiana, we were a fortune great place to work, we're an Inc. 5000 company, one of the fastest growing companies in the, in the U.S. multiple times. Even selling it right up until, right through 2020, I still got people asking me when I was gonna move the company to Indianapolis. So I think what, what's happened with, with all of these folks in kind of my age range who just decided we're gonna build our companies here, we're gonna stay here, this is our home, is we've inspired this maybe younger generation of thirty-somethings and twenty-somethings to do the same thing. And so we're seeing that at the mill. So we think long-term that, or maybe kind of medium-term, that, that those folks are gonna stay here, they're gonna build their companies here, their headquarters are gonna be here, they're gonna hire, hire folks here and increase headcounts in our city. And then the other, the other layer I heard in there was, how do we, how do we include everybody in our tent, right? How do we make sure that, that everybody's included? So, so maybe just a few, a few statistics. Diversity is super important to, to me personally. I'm a biracial kid who grew up in Martinsville, I think I've said that publicly before, so I'm seeing some nuts already, if you remember that. It's important for me to make sure everybody's included, not because, not just because it's the, the moral thing to do, we're all humans and we all deserve a place at the table, it's the financially prudent thing to do, too. When you look at investments in the startup world, the companies who do best are the ones that have diverse leadership teams. Our leadership team at Hannipin was fifty-fifty male and female, split right down the middle. And so we carry that throughout all of our programming at the mill, and I'm sure it'll carry throughout our programming in the trades district. So we have Reboot, which is our pre-accelerator for the formerly incarcerated, the last, or it's actually for marginal, marginalized populations, one of which is formerly incarcerated. The last one was Binary Folks, the one before that, I think, was Moms Reentering the, the workforce. Codeit Academy, Eric Code School, I mentioned that before, where half the, half the participants are, have high school degrees only, eighty percent are minorities. The number of investments that we make, the actual capital, the number of dollars that are allocated to, to minority investments approaches forty percent. I think the national average is somewhere around two to four percent, so we're well, well above the average. Still have work to do, right, until it's actually equal, but we're making really good progress. So, so all that's a long way of saying it's really important to us, I think we're doing all the right things, we're, we're laying a lot of the, or planting a lot of the right seeds at the mill, and we'll carry all those over to the, the tech center and the trades district.
Okay, thank you very much. I just thought it was very important. We're gonna talk a lot of things about investment, rate of return, but that is a great social addition, add to the social investment, and I think that's important as well. So thank you for sharing.
Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. This is for Mr. Fernandoz. This administration has recently established a 501(c)(3) board, and it's our understanding that they are to oversee city-owned assets, including Hopewell, Waldron, BCT, and the trades district. So if you would, could you please describe what your relationship will be with this board and how you may be interacting with them at the very early start of your tenure here?
Well, you know, it's my understanding from the conversations we've had with the administration, as well as what I've read in, in the media, that the 501(c)(3) isn't going to focus on the trades district. In fact, since we have this management agreement between the mill and the trades district, that need to kind of extend the capacity of the city for these kinds of activities is being addressed via the, the mill. So I don't believe that that's the, the case, that it will be under the 501(c)(3). I mean, currently, you know, the land's owned by the Redevelopment Commission, we're asking for, you know, continued appropriations to support the mill, so I, I don't think anything's gonna change anytime soon.
So you actually being pretty self-sufficient, once you get the funding and can move forward, this, this kind of takes you off that portfolio of what this particular nonprofit board would be responsible for.
Yeah, I'm not really in a position to talk about the 501(c)(3).
I see.
Someone else might.
If there's a comment from Mr. Crowley.
Alex Crowley, back again, Director of Economic Sustainable Development. So let me answer that question first, and I also have an answer for Councilmember Piedmont Smith. So in terms of the 501(c)(3), the CBCI, you know, I think the net was cast pretty wide originally at the original announcement. The general idea behind it is, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, right? And so as we look around at the assets and we say, all right, what are, what are the best organizations to manage given assets at any given time? And you look at sort of the obvious four right now, Hopewell, which is more of a potential, Waldron, BCT, Mill, which are, you know, in some form or another owned by some portion of the city. As Mr. Fernandoz said, we are very confident in the mill and the mill management team, both to handle the mill, handle the trades district overall, and handle the, the new potential tech center. So from that perspective, the CBCI really at, at this point has no role. In the case of the Waldron, similarly, if you recall, we negotiated and put in place an agreement with Constellation Stage and Screen to take ownership of the management of that building, always with the idea that says, someone who really is closest to it, understands the industry of, of whatever facility it is, ought to be the one to, to be able to do that. And so we're very confident in Constellation and their ability to do the, the right thing by the Waldron, which if you've been in there recently, they've already done a terrific job bringing it up to kind of next level. BCT, similarly, we've, we've had a longstanding relationship with BCT Management, Beskirk-Chumley Theater Management, and they are doing and have done for a long time a very good job managing that facility. So, you know, I think some of the early questions about whether this 501(c)(3) would suddenly displace or somehow sit over or get involved, at this point, we really have sort of gotten a little bit more specific about that to understand that Hopewell is a huge project, and they're gonna have their hands full looking at that, managing that. So the initial focus on, you know, Hopewell will take a lot of the attention, if not all of the attention, of the CBCI. What happens in the future, I think, remains to be seen, but right now, that's, that's how we're thinking about the, the various facilities and who's best positioned to manage them. And then Council, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, you asked, where is the money? And it's in the general fund. So there is no specific sub-fund in the general fund, according to Mr. Underwood, it's sitting in the general fund right now.
Thank you. Additional questions? Are you following up?
Yes, and I have a question, a different question.
Go ahead.
So the, Mr. Crowley, thank you for your response. Am I to understand that there's going to be no separate accounting for the funds that used to be creed funds? That it's just going into the general fund and can be spent whatever way the administration sees fit?
No, I'm sorry, I was answering specifically, like, where is it right now? In terms of how it gets managed in the future, I think that sort of needs to be discussed and remains to be seen. But where, you know, when it gets reverted into the fund, there is a fund, and that is where it's sitting currently. So, so I think you were asking, is there some sort of set aside already in place that has received that money? And the short answer to that is no. And, and, you know, that, that's according to Mr. Underwood.
Okay. I have another question, I think this is probably for Mr. Fernandoz. I, I think I heard you say that there's a, and maybe I misinterpreted or misheard, that there, there's a hundred-four-thousand-dollar basic operating agreement, but that the, this was in response to Mr., to Councilmember Smith's question about the ongoing costs, that the aspiration is there won't be any, that the tenant leases will cover costs, but there's a hundred-four-thousand-dollar basic operating agreement. Can you describe that?
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to, and I, to clarify that, and I'll send the council a follow-up note with the spreadsheet that I did, but the hundred-and-four thousand is the estimated operating expenses related to the building. So that's basically utilities and maintenance. And so that will be new costs once the building is up and running. Those utility costs will probably be lower in the beginning when it's not a hundred percent occupied. And as more tenants come on, more electricity is used, those costs will go up, more trash collection, recycling, et cetera. So that is the operating expense that'll be incurred when the building is completed. That's just the expenses. The revenue from the tenancies, as well as programming, as well as some of the other kinds of miscellaneous income we can generate, should cover that. And I said, I think, you know, if we have a rental rate of around twenty-six dollars a square foot, we need somewhere around twenty-five to thirty percent occupancy to fully cover those operating expenses. And I think we'll get there. I think there's a lot of energy and a lot of capacity in our economy to absorb, you know, that amount of real estate, and it's only about four thousand square feet of office space.
So, so that's totally separate from the two-hundred-thousand dollars per year that the RDC is paying to the mill for the management?
That's right. Yeah, and that, that agreement is, I think technically will expire prior to completion of construction, so that, that's something that the city council and the administration will have to address. Right now, it's a two-year agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Volan.
Wanted to know, this is a city with fifty-six percent of the population having a, a bachelor's degree or higher, compared to the nationwide figure of thirty-four percent, give or take. Can you tell us, I'm not sure who to ask this to, but of the jobs that are anticipated to be created here, how many of them will be for people who do not have a degree? I know we're a college town, but there are people here who don't have a degree. Is there anybody who can give us feedback on that? Like, what do you expect? I've asked a stumper.
Jen Pearl from the BDC is looking at the.
Jen Pearl is, has a lot of data.
She's diving into that.
Yeah, I figure she'll be able to tell us something.
She may be, may need a minute.
All right. Well, while that question's being asked, I want to tee up another question, like, we can ask her to come up when she's ready, but my single biggest concern here is how we decided to use creed funds, because we also have TIF funds available. And one thing I know, I'm remembering the end of Mayor Fernandoz's second term, we approved the Walnut Street and the Morton Street garages in 2001 and 2003. And if those are twenty-year bonds, they should both be paid off this year. And so I feel like there is room, plenty of room in the TIF, the downtown TIF, for us to have used funds from there instead of from the creed. And I'll follow this up by pointing out that, at the time the creed was approved, the then equivalent of Mr. Crowley was Ron Walker. He said, "The new creed district provides a strong," I'm reading from the press release, city press release from 2004, "provides a strong incentive for investment and gives the city of, a, a new source of revenue to pay for improvements to public infrastructure." Quote, "We can use the revenue to improve sidewalks and streetscapes, as well as for the conversion of the rail line to a multi-use path." So, you know, like, that does not, to me, say we should build a building to create jobs, even though I think that's an important thing. And I feel like the, the money, I mean, like, we have yet to really do anything like that with creed money in the twenty years that it's existed. So I, I, I appreciate the idea that the adminis, I mean, well, for the first question, I guess I would ask the administration while she's doing research is, does the administration have any specific object, or objectives for the other seven million dollars of the ten million left in the downtown creed? Other than the three million asking for, for tonight, the seven million left, what, if any, plans does the administration have for that money?
So Alex Crowley again. I, I would say a couple of things and answer your question. So the first thing is, it's actually interesting to go back and look at the original formation documents of, of the creeds themselves, which, which, you know, show sort of the intent of what, what really was hoped for as, as a result of establishing the creed. So one thing I think to understand is that there are two types of creeds. There's the creed, we, we have a Thompson creed, which, both of which have expired, but the Thompson creed and the downtown creed. And when you think about them, the Thompson creed, which actually was the first one in the state of Indiana, was really a site-specific creed. So there was a kind of a site problem, site-specific problem, Thompson in this case. The downtown, which came after it, was a geographical challenge, right? So, so they're a little bit different from each other. I would say the Thompson one, actually, where there has been expended, there, there have been substantial expenditures from that creed along the way, if you look at how that has turned out relative to the original challenge, that's a pretty good, good news story. It, it helped to activate a site, there were several investments along the way in that site, and it helped to activate a site into a fairly successful reuse over time, both through the Cook Pharmica and then ultimately through the Catalent expansions. So I would say that that, if you look at that, it's a very good use of that fund, it was very targeted to a very specific problem, and it was used to, and there's still money left over. In the case of the downtown creed, which again was a more general geographic issue that was perceived at the time, there have been investments along the way, which I think have helped to accelerate the, the success of the downtown. Notably, one that, that I was involved in, actually, not long after joining the city, was an investment to help, at the time, Invisage further grow its capacity within the Fountain Square. And so, you know, that, that grew the job base there, it was in exchange for job growth. Now, I think you're asking also more generally about some of the potential uses and, and what our plans are, as, as someone else had asked the question before, we don't have specific plans for the, the remaining seven million. We would say that it would be at least useful at, at the time of evaluating potential expenditures, whether it's from the downtown balance or from the Thompson balance, to, to keep those original intents in mind and look at the kinds of things that were contemplated back then, which involve, you know, three or four different types of categories, if you go to the original documentation. I don't know that there's anything that really mandates us, but I, it would, it would seem to make sense to try to keep to those original objectives as the balances are contemplated for further use, which can't be done without council approval.
I agree with you on the Thompson creed, I don't think it's relevant here, I think you're right that it was targeted to a very specific industrial expense. And I believe that in the case of both Invisage and this request, while it doesn't bring up the image of smokestacks that the word industrial brings up, you know, the fund, the body that we just, you just dissolved was the Industrial Development Fund, or the Industrial Development Advisory Commission. But I mean, I've been representing the downtown for twenty years, and I've always read the creed district, the debt for the downtown, as more than just an industrial development fund, that was also, as you heard from the press release, supposed to be an infrastructure development fund, something that all the tax, all the, the people whose taxes were collected to make that fund could share in. And, and last week, I proposed for the first time use of several million dollars from that fund for a downtown circulator, a trolley bus, which is something we've talked about for fifteen years, and I believe whose time has come. But that kind of idea will connect everyone downtown, will have uses among dozens, hundreds of entities and individuals every day, which is different than sort of this much more industrial development, and which is why I'm wondering why it wasn't TIF funding that was requested. Why didn't you go to the RDC and get TIF funding for this instead of using creed funding? Because I also know that we could stand to say improve utility infrastructure around the square, there's ancient structure, infrastructure around all the alleys around the square, that's gonna be an expensive proposition, but it's the kind of thing that this money, I think, was, was envisioned to, to use. So why not, it's, but TIF funds, especially. So why not, TIF funds, especially considering that the parking garages have been, or should be paid off this year?
Well, I think ultimately, that's a decision that I would defer to the controller, who really helped us look at the different potential funding sources. I think what I would say is, even though the fund is called the Industrial Development Fund, and industrial, as you point out, is a little bit misleading in this day and age, the creed acronym is Community Revitalization Enhancement District, right? And if you think of this as community revitalization enhancement, that's what this is. And we are, what we're talking about from the tech center is precisely that. And if you look at, again, some of the formation documents, the original resolutions, and you'll see that this really ties pretty nicely to that. And so, you know, ultimately, that's a decision, you know, they're two pots of money, and it's a decision that I defer to the controller's office on. I can say that when we looked at creed itself, and is that an appropriate place, and is that, does this align with the original intent, all of those check the box.
I simply don't know that I agree. I think that while it is a permitted use, it's not the only use. And again, I have yet to see any proposal that is for that other use. And, I mean, I hope you can understand why I'm asking. Like, this is the, I have to be concerned about the whole of downtown, not just one part of it. And while, again, the industrial doesn't imply smokestacks, it is just one use. I don't disagree that it won't benefit the city, but I'm asking when we're going to see a proposal like the one I'm suggesting that will benefit not just industry, but individuals, visitors, currently existing retail businesses, government entities, both city and county, people who are traveling into and out of town. This would benefit all of them. And you can hear that it's contemplated in the definition of the creed. In fact, it says that more than it says, we should specifically try to find industry here. We talk about rehabilitating buildings, but then letting third parties decide what to do with them. That, I think, is what the original intent was. So, I mean, it sounds like you're saying that the, I'm really frustrated because it sounds like you're saying that it's only, because industry counts, that's the only thing we should think about tonight. And I think more than industry counts. And I'd like, again, I don't understand why you wouldn't go to TIF funds instead of creed funds. You just, it was sort of an arbitrary choice?
No, and I'm sorry, maybe I wasn't clear. I'm not saying that those other things, we have officially ruled them out, and they are no longer relevant for coverage by this, right? So the first thing is, just so you understand that. Those are all relevant. They were all listed in the original creation of the creeds. They're still on the table. You ask the question, when are you going to see a proposal for other things? And we look forward to bringing that to you. The reality is, the, just last week, the BI DAC disbanded itself. Just last week, the fund, you know, basically ended. We had some work that we were doing with the Department of Revenue to kind of reconcile the final allocations, and so this is all very new. And I think we would all look forward to bringing the council proposals and hearing proposals from the council if there were interesting funding opportunities, you know, from these funds, with the caveat that says, again, not necessarily, but it would be interesting to try to keep to the original intent of them, which include a variety of different things, as you point out.
Is Mr. Underwood on the call?
On the call. I'd like to give others a chance to ask some round three questions as well. If not, are there additional questions before we go to public comment? Okay, let's go to public comment. If you would, I'm guessing there are several here in chambers who would like to offer comment. Could you raise, could I see a show of hands? I see two, three. Okay, and side conversations, four. Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
There are members of the public on Zoom that would like to comment on this appropriation ordinance. Please let us know by using the raise hand feature, which you can find under your control bar by clicking the reactions button or the more button. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak, and we will recognize you that way. And again, this opportunity for public comment is the statutorily required public hearing on this item.
Okay, and those in chambers, please go ahead and approach the podium. Mr. Lucas, are we seeing any raised hands?
Not immediately, no.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Yes.
We asked a question of Ms. Pearl. She should be permitted to answer at the length that...
Are you prepared to answer a question? Okay, why don't we do that, and then, and then go into public comment if you need to?
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jen Pearl, and I'm the president in the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. We were co-applicants with the City of Bloomington and RDC for the USEDA grant, and we're thrilled to see these next steps with the mill. We wanted to underline a couple of things. This project is a key piece in building a 21st century local economy. To the questions that were asked earlier, it's not about serving industry, it's about providing employment for the families and the neighbors in our communities. Our national and local economies have shifted significantly over time. Major local employers have come and gone, like RCA, Thompson, and GE. And economic development is about creating prosperity and connection to jobs for our neighbors. We're fortunate with 10,000 people each working in life sciences and higher education in Monroe County, and many others in advanced manufacturing, defense, and the public sector. But the pandemic hit many of these industries very hard, and it was a stark reminder of the need to diversify our employment and our private sector revenue base. The tech center is a part of these efforts. With the estimated impact of 866 private sector jobs, the breakdown of that is 530 direct jobs and 336 induced jobs in industries that work with tech. We checked, and while the IU Public Policy Feasibility Study did not get into a breakdown of wages, you know, this wage range will be served in this way, et cetera, they did look at peer cities, and they looked at developing industry clusters. We, what we were really trying to do is develop talent pipelines as a part of this concept. For example, there's a partnership with Ivy Tech in the business plan that connects with a broader scope of people across the community, which Steve Bryant will, I believe, address during his comments. We wanted to underscore that this is a really unique time in our community. National and statewide opportunities include the US Chips and Science Act in Indiana Ready. These can help us grow as that hub that was mentioned earlier, a part of that innovation corridor that runs from Indy to Crane. There's new leadership at IU, and new leadership coming in our public sector with these upcoming elections. And if done right, this is a very rare opportunity to launch ourselves into a strong future. The Trades District and Tech Center are far more important than just infrastructure. It's more, it's about far more than a building. This is about building an employment and innovation ecosystem to serve our neighbors for the future. It creates a hub, that the physical hub is the catalyst for people to come around in building that collaboration. When people move to this community, they are often trying to see, okay, I moved here for this job, but what about my spouse? Are there opportunities for me in the future, once this first job maybe goes away? And so this is a part of that, in diversifying the jobs that we have for the future, because we know our industry clusters have really changed over time. So we want to thank you for considering this. We know that economies can change, but we can be ready for them. So this is an investment in that future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone on Zoom? And will the next person in chambers please approach the podium?
I see no takers on Zoom at the moment.
Let's go to chambers then. Welcome, if you would, share your name for the record, please.
Steve Bryant with Ivy Tech and the Cook Center for Entrepreneurship. Well, thank you, everybody, for the time today. Good to see everybody. Obviously, I'm here to support the project. We've been a part of the project since the beginning. I helped review the proposal for the EDA and the strategic plan for it. I also serve as part of the executive committee for the hopeful rollout of the tech center itself. Ivy Tech being an institution that provides certifications, degrees for, you know, your two-year college degrees are going to be in demand by companies in the mill. As I've toured other facilities like this around the country, Indianapolis, Ann Arbor, others, you know, not every job that's in there is a four-year degree or an engineering degree. It's, you know, there are people in there in the administration, there's certainly people there in human resources, your core business operations, finance, that, you know, would be in that more technician-level, technician-level job. And several times, you've referenced the CHIPS Act. Those are technician-level jobs to make products that are made for microchips. We'll be looking forward to doing some of that work at Ivy Tech. We're obviously a key partner here because we want to see our students have opportunities for internships, potential apprenticeships, and certainly for employment and work opportunities at the companies that will be operating out of the tech center itself, and then also within the operations there. So we see a huge opportunity there. Obviously, everybody else has talked about the importance of growing this ecosystem of companies. I do nothing but work with small businesses every day. Most of those are one to five employees, and they're not mainly getting that much bigger. But for those that do have that opportunity for that rapid growth, that's what this building is for, and that's what this facility is going to build wraparound support to create. As we see those go, we want to be a key partner in that, and again, why we're supporting it. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Will the next speaker please approach the podium? Mr. Lucas, we haven't had any takers, or have we? We haven't, okay. Welcome, if you would, please share your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
I'm Jane Martin, and I chaired the First Mill Board and had the privilege of working with Pat East in its development year and the first year of its operation. And I think none of us ever dreamed that the mill would, a few years down the road, under Pat East's great leadership and his team, be an organization that had over 380 members, that had rich weekly programming, that reaches into every corner of this community, that there would be dozens of startups in that facility, creating lots of jobs, as well as companies moving here in the remote worker program. But as these companies grow, they need a place to graduate to, and that's the tech center. If they don't have a place to go, they will move. So this is an important next step in the ecosystem for the innovation economy of the 21st century. And why is the mill and the tech center important to Bloomington? Because all over the US, cities are being hollowed out because they don't have a core economy. There's great college towns that are great places to live with lots of minimum wage jobs. And on the other end, there's great communities that are retirement communities, but also minimum wage jobs. The mill is the catalyst for the core economy, and the tech center is the place where mill companies graduate. And last, I want to say a word about social justice. Pat and his team have built a mill culture that embraces diversity. Scholarships for women, young entrepreneurs, and people of color. Coding Academy that reaches into K through 12. Tutorials for lemonade for young kids, opening up lemonade stands. Reboot, Pat mentioned, the retraining for ex-felons. And this culture, I'm quite sure, will carry on into the evolution with the tech center. So the unique, diverse, and innovative culture that is created by the mill needs to have the next building block, which is the tech center. And I urge you to support this important next step.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. And our next speaker here in chambers?
Hi again, counsel. Eric Spoonmore, greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I won't take too long here. I'll be brief and won't belabor the point much longer, but we do think that this is an appropriate use of creed funds for this purpose. I appreciate Mr. Volan's concern for creed. We've had some good conversations and hope we can continue to talk more about ways that we can deploy those funds in the way that Mr. Crowley had talked about with their original intent, and I think we can come up with some good ideas for that. But, you know, what we're really excited about is the 866 jobs that this will produce, the 55, or $51.5 million in total private investment, and the $218 million in estimated total economic impact for Bloomington. And so that is a tremendous return on investment. And, you know, our belief at the Chamber of Commerce is better business, better community. This really reflects all of that. So just want to urge all of you to support this. Again, we see it as an appropriate use of creed funding, and, you know, this is all irrespective of the discussion about the 501(c)(3) oversight, but really do think that this would be good for the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Spoonmore. Will the next speaker please approach? And Mr. Lucas, have we had any raised hands on Zoom? Welcome, if you would, share your name for the record, please, and then you'll have three minutes.
Randy Cassidy. And I had the pleasure of being on the RDC and being able to make a vote that showed the partnership with getting the EDA grant, the aspect of this community collaboration. As Jim put it, when we're dealing with mill, we're dealing with the ecosystem that has now been provided. This is now looking as a very exciting partnership that is going to occur with your help and your cooperation on this appropriation in order to build that next thing that not only brings the Trades District to what we've all envisioned, but also the people together that gets that gig, the economy, the things that we call Bloomington. I mean, it's, it's good to be a Hoosier, but it's great to be from Bloomington. And if we can get, as they said, that ecosystem of the young people that find this home in their heart, then as they grow their businesses, they're going to be here. They're not going to grow it and then say, we're leaving, we're staying here where it counts and grow from its roots. So better to grow roots, bring the trees, and make them solid here. Thank you for your help. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Additional comments here in chambers? And Mr. Lucas, no one on Zoom? In which case, let's come back to counsel for any additional questions. Councilmember Volan?
I was hoping that Ms. Pearl was able to give us a sense of, I mean, I heard her cite 866 jobs and 330 induced jobs, but I'm still looking for even the roughest figure of how many jobs will require a degree. So maybe I can turn to Mr. East for existing data. Mr. East, can you talk about the mill itself right now? The population of this new building will probably come from the mill, won't it? From companies in the mill. Can you talk at all about what percentage of jobs from entities in the mill are for people who don't have degrees? Do you have any sense of it?
So maybe the best way to answer, I don't have a specific number for you, so let me just say that upfront. So let me talk around it a little bit. I think maybe the best way to answer this is to talk about Coded Academy and the types of folks we're trying to upskill and retrain there. So most of those folks, 50%, don't have a college degree. It's our intent that we target the unemployed and underemployed to train them for a career in technology. These folks can get certificates, which are, for IT management specifically, are very much the norm in IT management. So IT managers, that is the degree that you need in order to get that type of job. It's called a CompTIA plus certificate. You don't need a college degree, you need a CompTIA plus certificate. More and more code schools in general, more and more employers who are hiring engineers, developers, programmers, are not requiring a college degree. The world of technology changes so quickly that by the time you end up graduating after four years, whatever technology you learned in year one is maybe obsolete by year four. four years, whatever technology you learned in year one is maybe obsolete by year four. And so they're really looking at a lot of these bootcamps, online programs, self-paced programs, apprenticeships as a way to kind of bridge the gap on all of that learning and provide workers for the economy of today. The last thing I'll say is about engineers specifically is, the statistic is outdated, but I think in 2020, Code.org predicted there would be a 1 million job versus employee gap in terms of the number of code, coding jobs that were available versus the number of people that could actually fill those jobs. That gap is just widening because we can't train people quickly enough. And so my expectation is that, you know, when my, my kids are my age, that, that not only is, not only certificates and bootcamps and kind of this alternate form of education is not only a viable path, or more viable path than it is now, it's probably the preferred path at that point. Does that, does that help?
It helps some.
Okay.
I mean, I, it's important to me to know that you are, I mean, this is the first that someone's articulated specific things that are being done to help people without such credentials. So yeah, I mean, if that's the best answer that's here tonight, that, I'll accept that. Thank you.
Additional questions? If not, are there closing, are there final comment that anyone wishes to offer? Councilmember Volan?
Madam, madam, I'd like to move postponement to the April 12th meeting of this item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Did you want to speak more about that?
I mean, I, I feel like it's incumbent upon me to make it. I want to say generally that I support this project. I want to vote for it. It bothers me that, you know, I've talked about the concern I have about jobs for the uncredentialed. I don't think that's as important to me as the source of funding, but I will say this, that among other things, we could be spending this creed money on incentives to create jobs for people who do not have degrees in a city where it's even harder to find work because so many people already have degrees. So that, the fact that we just don't, that there's, I can't get any concrete sense of that number is one issue. But the other is that Mr. Underwood isn't here to answer that basic question of why the TIF fund wasn't chosen instead of the creed. And I don't think it's a lot to ask to get that question answered. If he can join the call now, that would be great, so we can get that answer. But I feel to, I mean, everyone's heard, I'm the downtown representative, I'm very jealous of these funds, and I think that they could and should be invested in ways that I've described. Again, I'll be talking about the proposal I have. But I think these are reasonable questions to ask that we should be able to get an answer from before we cast a vote. That's why I'm moving the postponement. If it's not the pleasure of the majority, I understand, but I feel like I need to make this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments and discussion? Councilmember Flaherty, and then Councilmember Pete Mott Smith.
I think a question for the maker of the motion, which is, does Councilmember Volan anticipate? I'm having a hard time seeing what we're going to learn additionally, I guess, with a week's time. Perhaps more specificity about Mr. Controller, you know, sorry, Mr. Underwood's decision not to use TIF funds based on his expertise and, you know, the relative merits. But I'm not sure, are you hoping that they will change the source, proposed source of the appropriation, and that postponement will allow time to discuss that?
That's an interesting question, and if there is one person in the room who might be able to answer, it's Mr. Cassidy, who sits on the RDC. And I wonder if he has any insight, we could maybe ask him before we, I'd be happy to withdraw the motion if we can get an answer tonight on why they chose this fund. Yes, I would prefer to see the money come from TIF. So, you know, again, I'm trying to do my duty as a representative of this district. And if there is a way to get that answer, if there's a way to make an amendment to change it, I want to do it. I will apologize for my relative naivete, but I'm doing the best I can with the knowledge that I've acquired all along, and I've been asking questions most of the time, even before this meeting.
Mr. Crowley, did you have anything to add? Or?
I would like to hear from Mr. Cassidy, too.
Or Mr. Cassidy?
So I hesitatingly come up here because this is out of my lane. What I can tell you from my observations of the redevelopment commission over the years, the use of the TIF funds, and in particular, the very significant project that's in front of us with Hopewell and the funding that's being committed to that, it's my understanding that one of the reasons why creed may have been preferred, you know, as eligible over TIF in this case, was because that TIF side is very much, not entirely necessarily, but very much dedicated to the Hopewell project and a lot of the costs that are coming up there. So, you know, again, I would prefer to have Mr. Underwood explain that in greater detail, but that, that's sort of my broad understanding of it. And I think that's what I would say.
Mr. Cassidy? But not yet.
Sorry, and I was reminded, you know, and I think you saw in Mr. Ferentz's presentation that the RDC has already committed $2 million of TIF. So it's not like the RDC is not taking a role in this. I think you were asking about the incremental amounts, but just to clarify that that's already on the table.
And counsel, Mr. Volan. As was discussed, the aspect, oh, I'm sorry, Randy Cassidy, member of the RDC. The aspect that was, when we looked at, when we were told from a funding source standpoint, we went to Mr. Underwood, Mr. Underwood explained to us that there was adequate funds in order to do that, and this was the best method to move things forward at the most expeditious way to do it.
Just to be clear, Mr. Underwood told you and the RDC that it was his professional opinion that this is the best place to do it?
Yeah. That's the resolution that was put forward, and we'd already put the 2 million in to make sure we got the RDC.
Did you know if there was 5 million available in the TIF that you could have voted, I mean, if he had suggested that instead, was that money available?
That was not a discussion that we had in regards to it as far as what the fund availabilities were in the different funds at that particular time.
Okay, thank you. So again, the conclusion I come to is that it was Mr. Underwood who suggested it, and his reasons are, for lack of a better word, obscure. I'd like to know from him why he chose this, why we couldn't have gotten the money from the TIF.
Thank you. Councilmember Pete Mott Smith?
Yeah, I would support this motion for a different reason, and that is that I would like a commitment from the administration to separate, separately account and set aside the funds that were part of the creed districts within the general fund, so that they are used for the purposes for which they were intended, the purposes for which businesses paid into the creed, specifically the downtown creed, you know, to benefit infrastructure downtown. So I would like to elicit that commitment from the administration before voting on this.
Comments on the motion to postpone? Councilmember Sandberg?
Well, I would support the postponement for the very reason that Councilmember Isabel P. Mott Smith has suggested, to get that better commitment from the administration, to make sure that the creed funds that were earmarked for specific things in our downtown improvement, that we keep that separate from other entities within the general fund. So, but in terms of the current funding for this project, I'm perfectly comfortable with the creed funding, and I would be, would have been ready to vote for that this evening. But that additional commitment, I think, is worth a postponement.
Additional comments on the motion to postpone? Oh, Councilmember Flaherty?
I'm inclined to support the motion as well. I'd be prepared to vote this evening, I think, if a vote were taken in favor of this appropriation. But I think Councilmember Volan raises a reasonable point with respect to having a more detailed answer from, I think, the person who was largely responsible for making the choice about where the funds were coming from for the appropriation. Additionally, I think Councilmember Pete Mott Smith, I agree with the point, too, that we should be tracking and thinking about the creed dollars separately that have reverted to the general fund. Certainly, it would be, it could be done without a special, separate accounting, that we could keep track of that and, you know, demand a use in line with the creed district's intent, but it would be easier if it was separated. So I generally support that as well. And finally, this question of if there's support to postpone gets to an issue that was anticipated when we talked about using regular sessions as our default method this year and not using committee of the whole, which was, it allows greater flexibility and a lot of benefits to use regular sessions as our primary vehicle for driving legislation forward, but at the same time, it results in the possibility that a minority of members, or even just one member, wants more time, that they would have had in a situation of a committee meeting followed by a regular session, but would not necessarily have if the question were called. We haven't really settled the best mechanism to deal with that and protect the ostensible rights of the minority in having more time. And for that reason, too, I'm sort of inclined to support the postponement, even though I recognize that a lot of time has gone into folks being here with us this evening. Thank you.
Additional comments? First round. Second round, Volan, or wait, Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. My comment is, is I, I can support this motion. I would prefer not to, and I'm prepared to vote no, but I'm going to, I can support it. But the reason being is that I think it's an appropriate use of the creed funds that has been requested. I also think it is not too much to ask or impossible to do to designate the remaining creed funds instead of putting them in the general. We just want to track it. I think that's what we want. That's all we want, is to track that money so that it don't get sucked into the general fund, and then we lose track. So I'm wondering if in a week or whatever, that we could have that established through Mr. Underwood or administration or someone, just tracking. It could be part budget or whatever, and I think that would go a long way, I think, with its body absorbing that. At least, that's just my feelings. I would, I would be prepared to vote for it tonight with the caveat that we still need to track it and identify it and designate it so that we know where it is. But I'm okay, I can support, based on the points that I've heard this evening, this motion. So thank you.
Additional, round, whatever that was, one, I think. Councilmember Volan?
A couple of things. First of all, the estimate of jobs, something that I'm still concerned about, and I want to get better data by next week. When Cook Pharmica or Catalent comes to us asking for a tax abatement, they've generally been very good about saying, okay, we're going to create this many jobs, and then we find out later they created more than that. And it was easier for them to do because they were a single entity that was directly responsible for creating the jobs. They knew what they were going to hire, and those tax abatements made sense on that access. This is a much more nebulous ask. The 866 is an estimate from the IU Public Policy Institute. They're not actually directly making the jobs. The fact that we can't get even the vaguest idea of how many of those jobs would be for people who don't have the benefit of a degree is enough for me to be hesitant. Because again, I've become increasingly concerned that, you know, we live and we keep hearing this phrase, college town, a college town. What it means is we have a much higher percentage of people with a degree. We're proud of the university that's here, that's giving, that's granting people degrees, but it doesn't obviate our obligation as a non-university, as a city, to be concerned about the people who don't have degrees. And so I think it dovetails with many of the other social equity concerns that I've heard talked about tonight. I don't think it's a big ask to find out, to dig in even slightly more to get a better sense of how this will benefit people without degrees. But my main objection here is still only, I mean, because again, I don't think that this is an inappropriate use of money. I am prepared to support it. I am not prepared to support it without an answer from Mr. Underwood, who apparently was sort of the primary decider of where the funds would come from. I have been concerned about the creed fund as long as I've been concerned about those two other parking garages that are going to be paid off this year. Why did we build them? Why did we use TIF funds to do it? And at least, the fact that we built those garages served a general audience. The term I wrote down was general interest infrastructure. This is industrial interest infrastructure. I don't have a problem with it. I just know from what I read from this press release, that was in my first year as a council member, I've always known that this was supposed to be for infrastructure that benefits the downtown, not necessarily the economic base. Again, I support it, but I want a better answer about why we're taking money from that fund. So I appreciate my colleague's support. It's only a week postponement. I think that it's a reasonable request of the administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, this is a great proposal. It's a great initiative. And I'm okay with the idea that we just seek a little bit more clarity from Mr. Underwood, and I think that, I think that's okay. I, it seems like a very reasonable request from my colleague, and so I'll support that, but I think this is a great initiative, and it'll, it's going to be wonderful. So we'll just, we'll get to it. Thanks.
Additional comments? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. Just a small note that, from a process perspective, for our own administrative process in the future, perhaps we could have avoided this if we, like, were more intentional about who's being invited, communicating that with all council members, and then we could make sure if we think someone needs to be there asking, or that sort of thing. I'm not, not trying to put fault on anyone, it's just I think we can learn from this. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Volan?
I have a question for our counsel. Is it possible for us to amend this ordinance to direct that the money come from a TIF rather than from the creed? Is it in the power of the counsel to make that amendment tonight?
Without the administration's support?
I mean, my understanding has always been that the administration has to appropriate funds.
Appropriation ordinances have to come on the recommendation of the executive, so I believe regardless of any other issues, the mayor would have to make that recommendation.
Thank you.
Additional comment, additional final comments, if not, on the motion to postpone? If not, I'll finish up.
Okay. Thank you to all those of you who have been here tonight, who have worked hard on this proposal, and who have expressed support for it. We all have different lenses through which we look at legislation that comes before us. One of mine is on economic resilience, and this speaks very, very directly to that. And so I thank you for that. I, I am very inclined to support it, and I, I too, understand the concerns, particularly where accounting and funding is concerned, about our obligation to answer all the questions that we've, that we've posed tonight. So if it would be possible to have Mr. Underwood with us next week, or, or his representative, if that makes sense, I think that would be helpful. But again, I do appreciate what I've seen in this proposal, and I think it's very, very promising, and I look forward to reaching a conclusion where that's concerned. So with that, will the deputy clerk please call the role on the motion to postpone? And correct me if I'm wrong, your motion included April 12th. Is the statement right? Thank you.
Councilmember Pete Mott Smith?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rallo? Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
That motion to postpone passes 8-0. We will take up this matter again on Wednesday, April 12th. Thank you all. We now go to legislation for first readings. There are none this evening, which brings us to our second period, second of two periods of public comment for items not on our legislative agenda this evening. Are there any, is there anyone wishing to offer public comment here in chambers? Are there any, is there anyone wishing to offer public comment here in chambers? And Mr. Lucas, could you please extend our invitation?
Yes. If there are members of the public on Zoom that would like to offer comment now, please let us know by using the raise hand feature in Zoom. You can find that in your control bar by clicking the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
I'm seeing one comment here in chambers. Mr. Lucas, are you seeing any raised hands?
Not at the moment, no.
Okay. Let's go to here in chambers. Welcome. If you would just confirm your name for the record, please, then you'll have five minutes.
Good evening. Dave Askins with the B-Square Bulletin. And I'm going to depart from my usual practice of asking a question and just make an observation following up on Counselmember Flaherty's framing of the process question and what happened tonight. I would invite you to imagine that the label for the meeting tonight was "first reading." If this legislation had been presented at first reading, and that's what happened tonight. Of course, that's not legally possible because Bloomington has a piece of local code that's not a part of the statute, but there's a piece of local code that says you cannot discuss or amend legislation at first reading. But what if you changed that? Then tonight's proceeding could have been done at first reading. You could not have passed it at first reading, but instead of Counselmember Volan having to persuade you to postpone, he would have had that right to push it to the next meeting, because that's what would naturally happen. That's the world I would like to live in. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Askins. Is there additional comment here in chambers? I'm not seeing any. Mr. Lucas, anyone on Zoom?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. With that, then, let's close this period of public comment and take up matters of council schedule.
Yes, thank you. Just a reminder that the council's scheduled budget advance, first of two budget advances, is coming up on April 25th, so I would encourage folks to start thinking about that. My understanding is that the mayor's office is prepared to go ahead with that conversation. You do have a second budget advance scheduled, I believe, mid-June. So, if you have questions ahead of the budget advance meeting, feel free to reach out to the council office, the mayor's office, or the controller's office. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lucas. I'm not seeing any other items on our agenda. Is there anything else for the good of the order? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good night.